My name is Eric Lynch. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Inland Wetlands Meeting for the Town of Monroe. It is Wednesday, May 14th, and the time is 6:38 PM. Will everyone please stand before I can leave?
I believe it's to get fire in the United States of America, two republics for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll take a roll call of the members of the commission and staff present during tonight's hybrid meeting. Please answer here or present, starting with myself, Eric Lynch.
Here.
Brian Kelly, Vice Chairman.
Here.
Rick Smith.
Present.
Jim Stewart.
Here.
Engineer engineer Benjamin Sabia, Secretary.
Here.
Paul Fernandez.
Here.
Mark Zammer is not here. Kathleen Gallagher, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Here.
Andrew Brodmann, Inland Wetlands Enforcement Officer.
Here.
Before we start, I'll read our mission statement and how the meeting will proceed. The objective and purpose of the Inland Wetland Commission is to provide for the overall protection and preservation of the inland wetlands and watercourses within the town of Monroe. Please note that this meeting is being conducted utilizing electronic equipment in compliance with state public that 1221 dot one such. This meeting is recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with state law. If you are attending remotely, you will automatically be muted and unable to unmute yourself. If you wish to speak during the public participation portion of the meeting, please use the raise hand function. If you're participating via telephone, press star nine to activate the raise hand. Staff will announce your name and unmute you when it is your turn to speak. The video feature has also been disabled for public participation. Anyone participating remotely should say their name and title if applicable at the outset of each occasion such that such person is speaking. All votes taken during which any member of this body are participating remotely shall be taken by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. The chat features will not be utilized nor considered during this meet. In the normal course of our meetings, we will hear public hearings and other applications. The protocol for public hearings is to have an applicant make a presentation to the commission. During which afterwards, the commission will be asking the applicant questions. I ask the applicant to keep their presentation as concise as possible. The commission will then review town staff and other independent comments. The meeting will then be open for public comment. I will ask that all comments be made to the chair or commission. After any all comments pro in opposition or of a general nature are made, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. Please keep comments or questions direct, or a time limit of three minutes may be imposed. It is not necessary that the applicant respond, but generally in their best interest to do so. There will be no further opportunity for new questions unless new material is entered in as evidence or testimony during the response. Please keep all comments pro and con specific to inland wetlands related matters. Other applications that do not involve public hearing will follow a similar format with the exception that there will be no public comments allowed. The meeting follows our public agenda unless otherwise amended. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
At this time, I'd like to ask that if there's any general public participation, anything you want to bring up for us that's not on tonight's agenda? Anyone in the gallery, come on up, stick your name and address for the record.
Two thirty seven Cottage Street, Denver. None of the agenda been approved. However, I sent an email while late was my public comment today, not on the agenda, to Kathleen and Andrew both. At the last PNC meeting, the development that's at the eight houses at the end of one eleven, and I forget what I picked the address.
Fifteen thirty six and fifteen sixty four Monroe Turpique.
It was brought up that the wells not being drilled more likely than not. It's going to be hydro fracturing, which is just another method of putting in wells. I guess when there's deep bedrock from what I read online. I don't recall at all in the past hearing anything. The August twenty four, twenty twenty four meeting notes, specifically that I mentioned in email. Kathleen reminded the commission that third party consultant was hired to review the environmental aspects of the project. Introduced Dr. Michael Clemens to the commission to go over his report. I don't remember neither of my neighbors anywhere in that report being brought up the method of well drilling that was going to be done, please proposed for approving homes. The hydro fracturing, acetylic info, I want to you guys, I know it's going to take a minute to go through. It's something that's going to potentially directly impact the wetlands as well as the seeps. Because depending on how those things run, it has been shown that it can deplete those water sources. I don't ever remember the environmentalists discussing this. So I'm concerned that it was approved without full knowledge of what could be done to the wetlands. And even if there's nothing that can be done on this particular project, I would at least like the commission to be aware that if this is type of well installation that is going to be done in Monroe with the amount of wetlands that we have, that everybody at least gets some kind of education on it. I would really appreciate that. It's out of me that there's anything we can do to stop this. But we have a lot of other projects out there. There's going to be more. And we're running out of room, which means we're going to get wetlands popped in more likely than not. And I just don't think it's something that the commission is ever aware of, which really bothers me. I don't remember this part that time. But I'd like it on record that I don't think the environmentalists were giving all the information necessary to give you guys the green light for what's up for approval or got through.
Thank you. Kathleen, wells are part of our purview or planning and zoning for health department?
Wells are under the jurisdiction of the health department. As it relates to fracking and the potential impacts to wetlands, I don't have that knowledge base. I know the word fracking was used, but I mean wells are typically hammered or drilled. I know hammered is typically the better option because it doesn't compact the soil around it. So there's more opportunity. But that's a little outside of, you know, my personal knowledge base. So if that's something we need to educate ourselves on, that's the
I always thought fracking was when the well was already in and not producing.
Correct. And that's what I have, based on the last PNC, I have my understanding of it. But again, I'm a layperson in that, so I don't want to speak out of turn right now. That's something that we can maybe bring someone in that can explain it to you, you know, more better and has a background in that. That's just not my expertise.
There was a specific thing I said that's not fracking, it's hydro fracturing is specifically for water wells. They inject it, I don't know what the PSI was, I forget. I think it would be like a thousand, I'm sure. They basically inject water and or potentially chemicals that will help dissolve sediment that is within these veins. It forces it one direction, depending which way it goes, it's blowing it out. The wells have to, one, have a water source to do that. I'm curious where that water would come from. Two, the wells then have to be drained for any potential contaminants and then refilled. And did sense stuff that there are times this can negatively impact the environment because when you're shooting this water out of this PSI to specifically clear out these veins, you don't know where the water's going to go. We learned that last August. The problem is that water can then contaminate surrounding areas, even if it's just the sediment. That's going to start impacting the things like salamanders and the things that we brought Dr. Clemens in to assess.
I don't know if that's for new wells. I don't know if it's new wells or if that's for opening up existing wells.
New water of all installations as well. They can use it for both.
I believe they can use it for both. The question is, is like, how often is that actually done?
I don't know.
How often is that the preferred method?
As soon as that word fracking came up, all of a sudden they backpedaled at PNC and said, well, pounding and even that has its own risk because you're still displacing the bedrock and you're still disrupting on purpose the water. It's not you just drill into port hoping you get enough. It gives you a better water yield. And almost everything I've read online about it says it is usually either of those are done, whether it's the pounding nothing or the water fracturing, hydro fracturing. They're both usually done in instances where there is a low water flow rate.
Yeah, but that's what I'm reading is well development by hydro fracturing. Using direct displacement specialized pressure injected under high pressure. And that's to increase your water.
Yeah.
Water after you've drilled the well, not not to drill the well.
Now, some of what I'm reading is you do it with the well installation and regardless.
I agree. You could drill the well and then use it if you don't get enough water, but it's
I think, I think part of that concern is, is that then are you also suggesting that we regulate this? For exist, I mean, there's a lot of properties in town that have really shallow wells. So are we regulating that, you know, are we saying that's a wetland impact? That if somebody has a well that can't, you know, that is dealing with drought and is only was hand dug and is only thirty whatever, we're not going to let them expand their well on an existing home because
No, when I get that, it's way above my pay grade. I'm sure we'd have to get a permit to do that too. I'm just saying if it's
But they have to get a permit to drill wells as well, you know, which is why it goes through the process.
Correct. But it goes through the process so that people who know what impacts are, whether it's in the wetlands, it's zoning, it's staples, it's whatever, like the sidewalks of PNC. Everything has a process for a reason, so that there is a group of people such as yourself who have hopefully a little more knowledge than the rest of us have. I just want to be sure if it's something that we did all these assessments for and we were trying to preserve the wetlands, especially there, this isn't the average home. It's one that has the upper wellings. If it's something that can be impacted, I just want to make sure we had or you had all the information that was necessary. And if not, maybe it's something to consider in the future that while we're so close to wetlands, especially when it comes to property B. Do we have any idea if it's going to cause an impact? Is it something that's a consideration in the future? And I'm not saying this project needs to be stopped. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying it's something that as we learn about things and we go, there are things that pop up. It popped up at the last meeting when you were at PNC. There's things that pop up we haven't experienced in town yet. And they're going to happen. But if we don't learn from them and take it forward, then it's pointless. Then we're never going to be knowledgeable. So all I'm asking is that we actually have everything to be considered. If nothing else in the future, this project being near my home is just one I was looking into.
We can discuss that if the commission would like us to. However, you want us to address it, we'll obviously support whatever your concerns are.
Right. I mean, we should understand it. So what the scope of our responsibility is for, if it's out of our purview, like it sounds like mostly wells are. There could be that however, if there is potential impact. So I think we're going to have to explore it a little bit and understand it.
Can I just ask for clarification? So forgive me, I'm just trying to make it out of my head. So that application was presented to us as a whole. And it was reviewed as a whole. Part of that application was that there would be wells on these properties. But each of those, each of those properties would eventually come before us as an application if wetlands are involved. All that we've said previously is that a well could be placed on that property as part of the approval from a wetlands perspective. Is that right? Is everything I'm saying correct?
Yes. So if there yes, so I'm going to, I'm going to talk about two separate things just based on what happened at planning and zoning. So if there is any disturbance within a hundred feet of the wetland, including drilling well, yes, that is going to come. Well, for residential properties, we handle that administratively. Unless for some reason, I can't remember on that, was it a condition of the approval that anything for that project came back in front of the commission?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So on that particular project, I think you guys made it a condition of the approval that all those properties would come back before you if there were wetlands or upland review area on the property. That's not typical. Most residential properties, unless they're doing work within twenty five feet of the wetland, does not come to this commission. And you know, that's kind of what we had agreed upon. But on that particular project, yes, if there was welllands or upland review area, you guys made a condition of approval. They came back in front of you. But if there were no wetlands on the property and they're not within the upland review area, that's not coming in front of you. That is not the argument. The argument made at planning and zoning was not for just the wells within the upland review area or the wetlands. The argument made at planning and zoning was all the wells in its collective whole. So
So
were a concern, you know, for both, you know, so it's like
So but in, but in theory, as those so all that we've said is that, that, that development could theoretically be constructed with wells, but the how the well is constructed, the method for, for, for digging the well, none of that was approved or denied. And so
Don't regulate that. You don't regulate the means and methods of how the well is installed.
So theoretically, it's not that something was missed, but it is perhaps an area of awareness that we should consider developing a knowledge about. So as those applications come before us for those individual properties, if there is something of concern in terms of how a well is?
The truth is, is I don't know. I just don't know. So we'll, we'll look into it. I don't know what is the impact of one well, eight wells, twenty wells, a hundred wells, you know, being drilled, hammered or hydro fracturing and the potential impacts and where that limit of threshold is. I will tell you that it's not a hot topic in the area. I know that there was concern with groundwater depletion for the planning and zoning, you know, aspect. However, again, that does happen, but it's, it's usually a bigger issue in other parts of the state, not in this part of the state, not in other parts of the country, not in this state or part of the state. So I think the question just is, is yes, I believe that could be concerns is, is the magnitude of what we see, two hundred and fifty foot wells in a single digits going to be impactful? I just don't know the answer to that.
So I guess we'll ask you to do a little homework and then
I'm not going to do a little homework because that is, I'm not, that's not my expertise. But we can talk about how to get somebody who does have information related to that to, to give you some stuff. And I don't like just Googling stuff on the internet and being like this because again, different part of the countries have different implications. So I think we should talk about to someone who does some of that work here hopefully. And you know, might have some more information on that.
I also believe that there's a difference between fracking and chemicals that you might add to frac a well for natural gas and frac a well for drinking water. I don't see that they're going to be dumping chemicals. And also, once you're done, you're drawing, you're drawing the water back to the house. You're not pushing it further out. So I'm not concerned, but if the commission wants to get more information.
I definitely agree that we need to get further information. I appreciate this, Mrs. So Stacey made this, and not as a complaint, but in this particular case, because of the geography of this development and the fact that residents did come and talk about their well water depletion. And we're told that it's not under the purview of this commission. We really need to be prepared to understand what our purview is. And what, what happens to some of these people who have shallow wells? And if the, and what happens is it's a hydrostatic, it's, it's wall water. They do put some chemicals in there to flush it out. And you're right, Jim. It does get flushed out over time and they test it, make sure it's, it's clear before you get drinking water. But they, what they do is they drill the well. They can't get enough water out of there. They put some seals in there, special casing. They go to high pressure on these things and blow it out. Crack the, cracking the rock, which is why it's termed as it is. So yeah, we definitely need to get ready on this one. Or understand.
If we were to ask the health department, the health department approves, or what, they're part of that application?
The health department approves the wells for their requirements with the state. Their requirements with the state do not require them to do an evaluation of potential impacts to adjacent wetlands or properties.
Do they have an expertise as to the different methods for drilling the well, for digging the well?
I can ask them.
Risks of each of those methods?
But I would probably state not. I don't, they might be able to direct us to somebody who can. But again, means and methods is often to the contractor. They are just checking to make sure setbacks to other wells, to septic systems, to structures are all meeting state regulations. And then the hope is, is that the state regulations are founded in a place that takes all of these things that we're talking about into consideration. And as long as you're meeting the state regulations, the idea is, you know, the health, safety and welfare are being met because it's a very large burden to think that you're going to put that on laypeople on a commission.
Moving on to regulated activities. Does not look like we have any nominations on this agenda. So moving into regular meetings. IWC twenty twenty five dash oh four, file number one, five, two, eight, eighty eight Main Street. Proposed excavation of roadway and installation of catch basin, pipes and plunge pool of the town of Monroe applicant James Mayo, town of Monroe engineer representative.
This application was accepted as a regular hearing on April ninth. If you remember, we had talked about it, it is, James DeMayo is town engineer is online to answer any questions that you had. You did have a couple of questions for him.
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. James DeMayo, town engineer. Yeah. So I'll just cover the questions that I remember. And if there's any other ones, please let me know. The one of them was asking about the duration of, of the installation. Our highway foreman believes that we'll be able to install all the catch basins and pipes in about a week, week and a half. Throughout that, we're, it's, we can't fully close Mill Street consistently. So it's not going to be closed consistently for, for that week and a half. You know, we do have private businesses that are located, you know, along the road. And so, and plus this is right next to the firehouse. So we need to be able to leave it open for emergency services to be able to go in that direction if need be. So if, if there are any shutdowns, it's going to be for a very short period of time. There was a question about the depiction of the plunge pool size. That's depicted, it's actually drawn a little bit bigger than, than what's going to be installed. A lot of that was just, you know, me thinking about the amount of disturbance and grading around it. So I'd rather show you something just a little bit bigger than what actually ends up getting disturbed and installed. So it's a little bit easier to always throttle it back. Those were the two main ones that I remember. If anybody has anything else that they could think of.
Have some questions on that? No, sir.
You could, and you could actually move that into deliberations. It's not, you don't need a motion to do that, but if you wanted to, if you're ready to, you can move it into deliberations tonight.
Do we need a motion or?
No, you don't need a motion for that.
All right. Moving on to IWC twenty twenty five dash oh three, file number fifteen twenty six, two Victoria Drive. Proposed construction of ten thousand square foot daycare and associated site improvements. Central LLC applicant, Jason Edwards and associate LLC representative. This is continued from four twenty three.
Good evening. I'm Michael Campbell, Chelmsford, the applicant Central LLC. The proposal that you heard last month is for two Victoria Drive. It's a ten thousand square foot daycare facility located between two during the last presentation, we went over a bunch of the site history. We went over the two thousand and four approval. The rail stood trails, bike route was, if I didn't mention it last time, was a condition of that approval was actually contained in the, in the mitigation that was cited by the commission at that time. So was the removal of, of the structures that we went over during the site history because this was a, a day camp, there were some, some structures that needed to be removed. Also, there was some, some mitigations that was performed at the site around, around that time or a little bit, a little bit after that time. And the, we had some discussion and there were several questions at that time about the stormwater. And Jason Edwards had expressed that he still needed to work a few things out with Mr. DeMayo. I believe that specifically they were concerning the inflow of some of the stormwater into the system as well as the impact on the underground systems during flood events, how they would be impacted if they would be lifted up from hydrostatic pressure, et cetera. And I believe those things have been worked out. So I'm going to have Jason Edwards speak to that. And also for my application team, Bill Kenny, from Bill Kenny Associates, up on scientists, landscape architects is here to answer any questions that you folks may have.
Can you just clarify that comment about the rail trail? And what exactly that, what I'm familiar with it, what exactly was that more specifically in the previous condition of approval?
Yeah. So in the, there currently is a, a walk bike path through the, I believe the eastern side of the site towards the eastern wetlands. It transsects the, the site. And it, it was actually constructed, although nothing else was on the site. The majority of the site was left as, as disturbed deposited fill material soil. And that's essentially the reason why, one of the reasons why we went through the extensive site history to explain like how this peninsula was, was impacted by the future of the, the past applications. But I do understand that there is a portion of that walking, biking, biking path that was constructed, it's constructed on this site. When I did my, my site visit, I saw that it was constructed south of this site, past the Victorinox building and even a little further because I came across many people that were using the trail at that time. As far as the portions north of this site, maybe Jason could speak to it. That I do, I do not know. It does extend to the north off of the site. My, my inspection ended at the site property line. Although I imagine they were going somewhere, so I think we could assume at least some portion of it to the north was constructed. So I'll introduce Jason Edwards.
For the record, Jason Edwards, January's Associates, office two twenty seven Stephanie Road, East. This is my slideshow from last time I as a attorney, okay, interesting. We had some back and forth with Chris DeMayo, he's on. I don't know if he's had a chance to review the final plans. And I think him and Nick in my office have worked through his final comments. I think everything was resolved. I'll confirm that, but I believe you've got all the type of details with that. There was a few other things to touch on. There was a public comment from one of the neighbors that have a plan here that I should that's, her last name was Rizio, but she was located at eighty equal drive and she's come up. Um, that's her, her last name was Rizio, but, uh, she was located at eight equal drive and she's come up to speak. Pipe crossing. She had represented that it was somewhere down near the entrance here of this access driveway. I went out and inspected it a couple of times actually again just today, just to make sure I didn't miss anything. Um, there is a pipe up here, a thirty inch pipe, which is on, on our plans. I have it in here. That pipe has been there. It was part of the construction of this driveway. It was approved. It's from a passes through it. Um, there's an elevation of three sixteen on the high side and three oh four down here. This is a well channel group that travels here and passes through. Um, our, our problems have no impact on any of the flow of that pipe. Um, so I, I think she was just mistaken on where, where she thought she was on the plan. Uh, but there's no pipe down in this area that, that we aren't selling or, or has been installed previously. Uh, not on the impact of her property, but her property, I believe, they make a drive, which is over here. Uh, so perhaps there's something that's on her property that crosses this driveway, but I did not walk over there. And, uh, just to speak a little bit on the rails to trail, um, it was in Kansas City, it was the trail. And that was part of the approved plan for two thousand four included that construction of that trail. I don't know if that was a rails to trail at that point, or if it was just a walk in traffic they wanted to hold. That is on the approved plan and was constructed per that plan. Coincidentally, uh, just this past week, I had a contract to client and mine comes to my office and asked me to begin work on. I could give you some bidding anyway, on the, the construction, uh, survey and stakeout, the continuous, uh, which goes. Picture that too. It continues all the way up to, um. But ways, I didn't realize it was going to be quite so extensive. Just a small story. So this actually, I took the plans and just kind of dropped them in here. So this is our tiny site down here. They're starting work on the entire trail. They're going all the way up here, runs up to Wolf Park. So this is, you know, a long time coming, uh, but a little piece down here, which was sort of a start off. Allowed it to continue through here, um, was a part of our project. And, um, was constructed to, to really allow it to continue, provide a trail that runs all the way up. There's the heart of the, the swamp or the wetland leading up to the, to the park. It's a great addition to town. So, um, that's now just, um, about to be started. Which I thought was an interesting coincidence. Really, I don't know that there's much else I have to present. I went through everything in quite a bit of detail. Last time there was, uh, some good questions on the playground materials, which we provided back to, to, uh, town of New York. I believe, I think it's by your packets. Um, I think if there was any other specific questions you'd like me to respond to, I'm happy to. But we didn't make much changes to the plans since we were last here.
Yes, there was a request for the information regarding the impervious surfaces. There was some study or something that, uh, was referred to with regard to, I was questioning twenty seven thousand square feet of impervious surfaces. And no, no impact, no significant negative impact. And my, part of the response was, oh, well, this report says that it shouldn't be that way. Was standing up for, you know, the fact that you could put this much.
Well, we had a, we provide stormwater treatment and, and detention in.
Oh, it was. Sorry. I'm sorry. I believe, Mr. Kenny, did you, did you use a, did you reference a study that had been done regarding impervious surfaces? I was questioning the size of the pervious surfaces. You came back and said, well.
Yes. Uh, Bill Kenny, uh, professional wet scientist, soil scientist in landscape architect. So I think I referenced the Connecticut deep stormwater quality. And then how that was developed. There was one released in two thousand and four, and then it was just reissued in two thousand and twenty four. But basically where the state of Connecticut, uh, would be objective to protect wetlands and waters of the state. And recognizing that there's going to be development in the landscape. Um, they, uh, reviewed studies that were done. Throughout the country and probably in other parts of the world that looked at, uh, impervious coverage. And, and then looked at B M Ps such as the ones that are proposed in the manual. And they said, uh, when you do have development, uh, rather than having it. Collecting your water and discharging the straits of the stream, which would pollute it, then you do these B M Ps. And if you, uh, design your B M Ps in accordance with the manual, then, uh, then you're, uh, based on all the studies that have been done. And how they then base their manual on that, that you are, um, going to be able to protect the wetlands of water sources from impacts by following the B M Ps. Right?
Even though we saw that the removal of the, the pad for the Quamsit hut did have an immediate impact on the, the wetlands to the west. And expansion of the wetlands to the north. What I'm referring to, Mr. Kenny, hold on a second, is actually a, a request, I believe Ryan made. Did you, did you ask for this information?
Yeah, I think that I said that it would be, although perhaps not a requirement, that it would be helpful to see that documentation. It would be pointed to it so that we could, we could see the report. Not that we don't trust, trust your, your testimony. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I'm referring to.
Okay. And if I might just clarify a little bit, the, uh, when we consider impacts, and I believe it's in the statute as well. We consider what we call direct impacts and indirect impacts. And the, the pad was a direct impact in that it was a structure built in the weather. And so it eliminated, had a diverse, had adverse effects, eliminated part of the weather there. Uh, when we think about indirect, we're saying if we're doing something, it's not in the weather, but we're, we're adjacent to it. Proposing a development adjacent to it, how might that affect the weather, although it's not in the weather? And, and in most cases, it comes down to water management. Cause you're doing the, the water, whether it be sanitary discharge or stormwater discharge, it has the potential to convey pollutants into the stream from the weather. So, um, that's just the, the difference between those two different activity, between our proposal. Which is activities outside of the weather. And that had, that had a direct impact previously, that was just physically in the weather.
Can someone also on that subject, just talk about the conversion of, like, it's hard to see on the site plans, like, what is there now? I know it's a field, but like, what's the quality of the soil that's there? What's the quality? If nothing happens here, like, what's going to grow there? What's the, like, quality of what's going to be there? Because my understanding is that it's a pretty disturbed, it's an old ball field, it's things like that. Can someone speak a little bit as to that? Cause when we talk about, you know, putting impervious surface down, there's a great difference between putting it down in clear cutting forests. And then putting it down on an area that's already disturbed.
And, uh, we did visit the site and review the existing conditions that, uh, that you referenced. Uh, it is a disturbed area and we think that between those two weather systems, it is substantially filled and disturbed soil. And, and there's a lot, so it's structured, it has, it lacks a lot of structure. And it is being exposed in the last, uh, two decades. Like so many other places, when, when areas have been, like that have been exposed, it's a prime area for invasive vegetation to come in. And without some, in my experience, an area like that is just going to continue to be a haven for invasive vegetation. So that I would likely expect that that area is, uh, we're seeing it over and over again where an area. Has a difficult time to evolve into a forest, is the vines that come and just smother the trees and get these mounds and vines. Over, uh, basic vines smothering invasive shrubs. And so I, I think that area, if it was left alone, it would mostly become an area like that. There'd be some tree growth, but, um, mostly a prime location for invasive plants to take over. Development management then.
Mr. Kenny, you had told us that, uh, it's a young forest that has taken over, uh, that wetlands to the west and the north.
So that area, uh, as part of their, I'm, I'm referring to the area of the development of the, the building, the parking lot.
Right.
In the weather, they did come in and plant trees. And that is something, as a society, as we go forward on areas like this, we need to help nature, mother nature along because of all the invasions. So they planted trees. That's a great first step. In our document, our planting plan, we've developed a management plan for the areas that border the development where we said. Uh, this area, there's some native trees there and there's a basic shrub going and let the trees keep rolling and plant more trees. But cut out the shrubs and cut out the vines and control the vines. And, um, other areas create a metal habitat that you mow a couple of times a year. Cause you're either, in my experience, uh. If you have a full sun environment, to control the invasions, you end up having to mow a couple of times a year. And create a metal habitat that you mow. Uh, the other extreme is trying to get as much shade as you can. You're still going to have invasions, but not to the degree that you would in a full sun environment. So we proposed planting, uh, a bunch of trees, um, to deal with that. We had eighty degree trees proposed. I know in two thousand and four, they had seven trees. So we really have tried to look at that and, um, take a careful look at that and have come up with a careful plan to help. Protect that, that environment that borders the development, the buffers of the development.
You expand a little bit on what this might look like in five years, ten years, twenty years, if nothing ends up. Because I, I know you said invasive species could take over, but can you maybe articulate? What happens if we don't do anything?
Yeah. Uh, well, it's. Many of the, there's a six to a dozen species that are very common, like commentators like this. The mugwort, the common mugwort that takes over pervasive, evasive layer. And then multiple thorems, there's a lot of olive, invasive olive shrub that's, that's already on the site. And then something that I'm seeing that's moving up county is the porcelain berry vine. That is really wreaking havoc on properties. And that's a line that just smothers the shrub layer. I can see something like that, that taking over. There's also bittersweet vine and, uh, but this porcelain berry is doing much more harm than bittersweet. So I think some trees will grow, the vines will grow up the trees and impact their growth and health. But I expect it'll be more of the shrubby, uh. Habitat, more like, uh, instead of having multiple layers of the forest with a ground level, a shrub level. It's understory tree level, canopy tree level. We're just going to have really the ground level, the shrub level. And it's going to be primarily invasive vegetation. If, if you just want to move from that.
Um, I could add a little bit to that. Uh, I was out there yesterday to inspect the pipe that was in question. Um, which I couldn't, I, I couldn't find that pipe either. So that, that, that pipe is either nonexistent or, um, but the other pipe that you do show on the plan is flowing just fine. Uh, but as far as that area goes, uh, it, it, it's definitely an old field. Uh, it, it, it's hard packed. Um, natural succession will take over and succession species will move in. Um, there's signs of the mugwort, uh, mustard, kind of the tough guys are, have already moved in. Uh, mostly the lower growing, uh, weeds, uh, some invasive. Uh, but you see signs of some of the succession species like, like locusts and birches are starting to kind of move in. But they're going to have a very tough time growing there. What's going to happen over time? I mean, it's, it'll take many years, but as these weeds die. And as the leaves from these trees get deposited in there, uh, it will, you know, it will increase the, the quality of the soil. And other things will, will come about. But the area that's there is, is, um, it, it, it's barren of soil. It, it's hard packed and you can tell by the plants that are growing there. Um, so if it was left the way it was, it will, you know, be a habitat for wild invasive tough weeds. Until the time is right for other plants, hopefully native plants to make their way into this area. Um, I do have a question, um, as I was out there looking at this. Uh, your report said that you were out there delineating these wetlands in June of twenty twenty four. And then in March of twenty five, did you visit that site in Ju- in March of twenty five?
Yes. So we, we did the evaluation originally. Uh, and then this is common in our work when we do a translation, then we never hear from someone. But all of a sudden, uh, a year later, oh, nine months later, some, someone's proposing something. Uh, they'd like you to help with the assessment. So we revisited to look at it for that purpose.
Okay. Did you agree with your original assessment from June? And the reason I ask is when I was out there yesterday, um, I'm looking at where the flags are. And there were quite a few spots where, um, there was, you know, very obvious saturated soils. And, uh, vegetation that would be indicative of wetlands. Um, and, and really to ten, fifteen feet on the other side of where those flags are. So I'm just wondering if you put your eyes on it this season, are those wetlands moving? Are those wetlands getting higher, getting wider? Or can we assume that, that the wetland flags that you have out there is your assessment? And that is the line as of today?
That is my conclusion. The, and I, we did review it, I will say, last week, I think we almost got a month of. Right on, you know? And with those compacted soils, it doesn't surprise me that you have some. I, I've, I've been out on other sites this week. Well, really last week, we weren't able to get out, so we were busy on Monday and Tuesday this week getting out and looking at sites. And, um, I am finding that the, uh, sites are much more wet, uh, right now than they've been in months. And so, uh, it's not uncommon to get these temporal vents, these short periods where this water is bad for me. It doesn't stay there long enough to create a, a wetland condition in my, and, and, uh, as you know. Um. Uh, wetland vegetation, you have what's considered obligate species, which, which is essentially ninety five percent of all, if you find that plant like scum cabbage, it's going to be, you know, wet. But there's a five percent tiles, but you also have plants like red maple, it's the most common. Tree in our swamps, but it's also, half the time you find it, you're not wet. So, um, some, sometimes, particularly in a disturbed site where there's impacted soil. You get some of these plants growing outside the limits of the land. So it doesn't surprise me to find, after all the rain we had last week. And the soil conditions that we have, that there's, if you go out there today or yesterday, that you see things that make you think, uh, the wetland is wet.
Is it worth going out and remarking the wetlands just to be sure? I mean, I don't know if one year is good.
You know, I don't, I'm just, I'm just, uh, I'm observing something that raises a question. So I, I would, you know.
I think it's fair, cause you know, some of this is.
If our soil scientist was out there, if, if he was out there this year and he looked at it and he is corroborating with his original assessment, that's fine. It's just, it, it drew, it drew my attention.
Right.
As something to be questioned.
It's a question. So. Uh, yeah, should, should we have it remarked or are we comfortable with where the flags are now?
It's, uh, my position based on. It's, uh, my position based on our observations this spring that the line is appropriate.
Is there anything else you wanna, okay? Well, you have a specific question?
To make sure everybody, all of the history of the site, well, I didn't even watch your last part.
I didn't, I didn't watch the video, which was fun.
We didn't show any questions, but that was a baseball field, it was an extrastation. That's why it is compact.
Well, it is, it is very hard packed, as you say. It's not gonna become a jungle tomorrow, but, uh, eventually it's gonna, there'll be a battle out there. My concern is the battle. Uh, you do still, you did put a revision on, although there's no revision notes for what was revised, like note 12, 18, 16, you know, that's normally when I did drawings, I had a revision thing to, to explain what revision two was. But I do see that, uh, under invasive vines, uh, note three still referred to glyphosate 41. I thought we said.
I apologize, we should have written that. We're, we're agreeing not to use, uh, herbicides if you don't want us.
Yeah, it's like nuclear weapons in, in Ukraine. We don't wanna, we don't wanna go there. I, I just, it's a battle and no, it's a battle and it's all along, mud war, mud war. You can, you can verify this, Andy, but, uh, it's a battle. We have a lot of invasive species along the clock, we have problems, but let's not, let's not go all out war. Cause as you said, they're, they're tough cookies, they're tough, uh, tough weeds, so. But glyphosate, yeah, thank you.
We did talk about that at the last meeting and I think it was just something that was left off, but it could certainly be a condition of the approval, cause they were all on board with it. I think it just, I, I think it just didn't make its way to the plan.
Yes. Right, I just noted that it is on 5.7 and.
It was one of the, uh, comments that have not been addressed. I think there were some other minor comments that, uh, uh, the engineer had had that still need to be addressed, that he had said they were very minor things that could be a condition of approval. It's not.
Now might be a good time to bring James into the conversation.
Is that right, James?
Yes, sir. Um, yep, so again, James DiMaio, ten engineer. Um, yeah, the, the, there, I think there was like two or three very, very minor comments. Um, not necessar- and, and actually they don't necessarily pertain to planning and zone, or inland wetlands. They are more planning and zoning, um, and floodplain related. Um, but I will give you, I'll tell you what they are. That one is, uh, they provided some information on the playground material, which has like a foam mat. And, um, my concern, and it's just placed down and held by the weight of, you know, every itself and everything that's placed on top of it. Um, I just have a concern about that lifting in a flooding event. Um, so, you know, uh, some form of fastening that down is, is all that I would have for that. Um, the other comment is, uh, I will say it's nitpicky, but, uh, uh, Edwards Associates did provide me a cut and fill analysis that I, I requested. Um, I just need him to verify and add a note indicating that, that cut and fill analysis is for everything under the flood elevation. That's not a full cut fill for everything above, even though the whole site is pretty much under. But, but again, th- those, that's pretty much it. Um, and those are realistically more planning and zoning matters. Um, I mean, aside, unless you wanted to weigh in on the, uh, material that they are putting for the playground, but, um, I don't necessarily have any concerns with it, other than it floating it during a flood.
You guys wanna address that?
Yeah, I mean, I, as far as the, the cut and fill analysis, I can answer that. It's what he wants, you know, assess just before, um, or just the flood elevation. Playground material, we'll have to take a look at that. Uh, that's checked by the, the, uh, the, the corporate planner, corporate contract buyer. So we'll have to talk about what the actual specifics are, but we can get back to you and, um, you know, as a.
Yeah, see if you can get some kind of anchoring methodology that'll.
James, you're gonna give it a chance for the US. If this is approved as we go through P and Z, you can make sure that's addressed as we go through there.
Okay.
Yeah, and Jason, just so you're aware, my conversations with Nick were just, you know, uh, they didn't ha- they, the manufacturer doesn't have anything specific for this type of use. Um, so, uh, and, and Nick just provided the standard manufacturer's information, which is what was requested, but that's just my only concern, cause it's literally a, a two inch thick foam mat that gets turf placed over the top of it. So there's really no weight holding that down. Um, so that's just really my only concern. But, but again, that's some, yeah, it, it's easily addressed that, you know, especially during planning and zoning, so.
In the, in the case of that mat, and I do, I'm sure there will be playground equipment on top of it. So there will be some things holding it down, but in, in the event of a flooding event, it seems that it could easily be raised off the ground and it could be a force against any kind of fencing, blocking that area in. And that, that then becomes more of a concern for me. So I am, I, I was looking at that, I was questioning it myself a little bit. I think to be able to anchor it down, there is a value in that.
We have no problem, sorry, Jason, um, we have no problem making some sort of condition that we satisfy the down unit request to have the anchor.
And, and just that there are ways to do that. You would almost do it, uh, there's a couple of options if they don't have something that actually like works with it for fastening. You could do something similar to how they do athletic fields, which is basically you wrap, cause it, there's turf on top. You like wrap the turf, turf around and there's like a board around the whole thing that you can either staple it in or you can actually glue it in and put it in between something. So there are options, it's not like there's not available ways to do it. So you wouldn't necessarily be anchoring the shock pad, you're probably anchoring the turf on top of it, the material on top.
Yeah, as long, as long as there's some, some way to secure it down to keep it from floating away and causing more havoc downstream. I think that's whatever the method is, so. Have you had some concerns about parking lot and some flooding and?
Yeah, I'd, I'd ask a question about the water quality volume and the 1.3 inches retaining that. See that, uh, Mr. DiMaio says that was resolved, but I'd love to hear where, where that volume is being held.
Can we just, we want to go on to the next question? We'll wait for that, okay. Hey, that, uh, that comment was pressed to see your satisfaction, I believe.
Uh, yeah, I believe the, the bulk of that water quality was just being handled within that, um, stormwater quality unit. And there was a, um, so, so the pipe leaving the unit, I believe was lower, but then the pipe leaving the manhole, it, it basically act as a, a overflow weir. Um, so it did keep it inside the system itself.
Yeah, I think the same, the minimal weir has got a.
Manhole number two?
I believe it's manhole number two.
See, I got an invert of, uh, okay, so there's a 299.5 to the northwest, northwest. Okay, so, so backing up water in that first set of channels. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Uh, anybody else have any, uh, questions? We have, okay.
All right, um, I do, uh, this is something, can you, can you confirm for me the number of parking spaces in the parking lot? Just, um.
You have forty, forty?
Forty-three.
Okay, so I have to confirm.
Is that like the?
Part of the reason that I asked that question is just, I'm looking at the alternative plans, um, the prudent feasible alternative plans. And I was looking at 3.2 in particular, alternative number two. And it looked to me like the parking lot in that plan was, was larger. And I, that may just be just, uh, just eyesight. And I was curious, I started to count and counting the lines and asking the question, I figured I would ask the question. I'd rather than thrust my eyes.
Down actually, the zoning requirements do require more, but we're, as we've requested, for a certain number of those, they probably had the actual required amount for zoning that was on there. Uh, but I don't know the number.
And it was more so the question in, in alternative two, are there, are there in fact more parking spaces?
Yeah, there's, but just, I just did a quick count, it's about, it looks like it's just shy of 50. I could be off, you know, in either direction. And what they're showing is forty-three plus, how many deferred, plus 13 deferred parking spaces.
It's like a minimum requirement?
I have not reviewed this as part of planning and zoning. I don't do a full P and Z review until they come in. I do know that James in his comment letter did reference something to the sort. Um, I have to look at the deferred parking, um, requirements and it's really at the discretion of the Planning and Zoning Commission. If they're willing to accept deferred parking in order to handle it, there is a mechanism in the zoning regulations that allows them to do it. But it is at the discretion of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think James' concern is also my concern is just its lack of connectivity to the main area. The idea of deferred parking is that if for some reason we realize that you do need more parking spaces in order for the use to function correctly, we can force them to basically pave those areas and create parking spaces. Um, however, I will say related to this use is that you probably have 13 staff members that you would just designate that to be staff parking, cause you would have all of your daycare workers plus the director, you know, things of that nature. So it could be utilized in that way. Um, and I also.
Looking at that corner where, I mean, it's so close to the wetland, is there a way we could chop out a couple of spots?
I would rather not chop out more spots. I think it's already gonna be, it's already, it's not my preference to have 13 deferred parking spaces. Um, again, it's at the discretion of the Planning and Zoning Commission, but.
So just to be.
That's why there's a discrepancy.
That, uh, that alternative two actually is providing the amount of parking spaces that theoretically there should be on the site.
It's still a little less, I think they're showing, uh, 56.
Okay, so that's necessarily an expansion of spaces. It's, I guess my, my question is, as I look at plan two and alternative two, there are more spaces there than in the other plans, but that's not about expanding for extra space. It's, it's getting closer to the requirement.
Yeah, I would also argue that they're much, their disturbance and their parking is much closer to the wetlands than what the current application is. So I.
Yeah, it's not about the validity of that whole plan. It's, there was a question, are we adding extra spaces into that plan that don't need to be there?
I don't know, this was like 2004, I don't know what the zoning requirements were in 2000.
Understood, understood.
We brought this in because it was.
Yeah.
But no, that original alternate is, is probably closer to what would be required per the zoning regulations. They're choosing to not have that area of disturbance and in order to create less of an impact to the upland review area, they're trying to defer 13 parking spaces.
Interesting, okay, that's helpful.
Could you do some of that section in non-paved parking, gravel to help?
Well, at the moment, if it's deferred, what that means is it stays, um, open, so they can't build on it, they can't put a structure, they actually can't plant on it like large trees or anything like that. It has to basically just stay grass or meadow or something of the sort. So it's in, and, and they can't change the grade in substantial ways, so that if they ever do need to utilize it for parking, they can in the future.
No, what I'm talking about, uh, east, northeast corner of the parking lot, we've got the dumpster with an enclosure and a few spots, you know, just to the south of that. That's why I'm just throwing it out there to see.
I would also argue if there's a place you wanna put some sort of pervase pavers or pervase asphalt, I would not want it near the dumpster area.
Anybody else have any, uh, questions or comments?
Jason, um, on site right now, there are some orange stakes in the ground. Uh, you familiar with what they could be referring to?
At one point, we had staked the building, the corners of the building.
Was that the building? All right, so.
I think so, but I can't, I don't have something certain.
Okay, I do have a, I do have a question of, uh, some stakes that are in the ground right now on the northwest corner. Um, there's a stake in the ground right now. I wondered, I'm wondering if that orange stake would be indicative of the limited disturbance or would that be the building?
We probably did the limit of disturbance over there because we.
If that refers to the limit of disturbance, that would, okay.
As we were doing the testing, we wanted to make sure that it didn't get beyond any of the, that might have been what they said.
Okay.
Yeah, if you found, no, 100%, it's hard to, yeah, make any implications for it.
Cause if it's the limit of the disturbance, then that would make sense. If that's actually the corner of the building, it's, it's.
We had done, you know, a few different stakeouts out there, so I, that was probably the last one.
Ben, did you have something?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Um, I was just looking at sheet, uh, 2.1. Um, it looks like you have a French drain up by the playground. Uh, on that sheet, but then on the drainage sheet, it looks like it's further down. Is that two?
Uh, um, it was modified.
So it's just the one drain, it's not gonna be two drains? Any else, will there be any questions or comments? All right, so who do you wanna leave us?
Um, that's up to you. You can continue this on to the next meeting if there's, uh, any additional information that we're looking for. There were some minor comments that, that need to be addressed.
Yeah, I think we should hear that and we need to open it up to the public at this point, too.
Regular meeting, though, right?
If we close, this is a public, this is a, this is a public meeting, so if you choose.
That we still upload here at the.
We can go to both, can I?
So let's hear the public and then let's revisit this in case there's anything that they bring up that warrants the commission's request for more information.
Is there anybody in the chambers who'd like to come on and discuss the commission regarding this?
While you did that, I did have a quick question for James. And I apologize, I was trying to find the right document to get.
He's still with us.
Yeah, yeah, don't worry, I'm still.
Hold on, let me just see if there's any, anybody online who wants to speak, uh, about this topic.
Friendly reminder, if you are online and you wanna speak, you need to use the raise hand function, which is a button on your interface. Or if you're calling them by phone, you have to do star, phone.
We have people online, but nobody's raising their hand.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna use very unscientific terms, James, I apologize for that, cause I'm still trying to find it. But we discussed the possibility, uh, if, if there was a large flood in the parking lot, um.
Yep, I know where you're going with this. Okay, so.
Are you satisfied? I'm curious, I, I think there was a comment and now I'm trying to get back to the document that I read earlier.
So, so, so my concern was during a flood event, what's, what's going to prevent any, anything that's, um, contained in the, uh, um, water quality unit and the underground infiltration system to remain in that unit? Um, so through, through a series of backflow preventers, they, they've satisfied my concern with that. Um, this way, it's, it's pretty self-contained. Um, and then there's, there's really no way for wa- even if water's above it, um, i- I'm now satisfied, that's not gonna leak out.
Good, okay. All right, so I guess we'll continue this until our.
Continue to the next meeting, which would be May 28th is the next meeting.
Right.
Can we be a little clear for the applicant on, I know we said, um, some of these items could be conditions of approval if it were to continue that way, but it sounds like you want to have a revised set of drawings. Is that correct? That removes the herbicide note that, um, has some information about, uh, anchoring the playground equipment? So you guys wanna see all of that? I just wanna be clear with them.
Yes, I, we absolutely wanna see all that documented.
Right.
Yeah, I'd like to understand kind of what the plan is around that material, the turf and how it's going to be, uh, how it's going to be.
Secured.
Secured.
Um, and we also ask staff to draft a motion so we can act that night rather than waiting another or meeting after that.
Draft a notice of decision?
Yes.
Um, that's really up to you guys. We also don't mind you going into deliberations and really trying to feel, I, I think there's a lot of.
The standard, the standard motion, then we could work on conditions at the meeting. I just, that way we have a, we have a formal motion to work off of.
That's up to you if you feel like you've heard enough from the commissioners to know.
I, I will let everybody here make a comment and then we can, I, I like the idea of being efficient, so.
You don't have to act on it.
No.
The next meeting, if you don't want to, it's just.
Or you can direct us to do both, I mean, that also.
I've done that, I've done that.
Negative.
I've done that, I've done that before.
Okay.
That's my idea.
Um, but sometimes the negative um it's hard if we don't have reasons, yeah. So I, I would even, I know, I know it's not efficient to deliberate and then do it in another two weeks. But for us, when writing it, it, that's that's easiest, so I think we can prepare on one end and if it happens to go, if we go through deliberations and it's decided.
Falling apart, it's not going to get.
It's a denial that we would probably ask you to wait.
Yeah, exactly.
That's fair. We'll cover that.
And in addition to that, uh, we wanted a report from the applicants uh that they were referring to at the previous about impervious surfaces. Did we want to see that?
From.
Reference of the handle, can I understand that we can do that? But I think just for, in the spirit of leaving no questions on the answer, it would be helpful to have even that specific report in front of us. We need that motion?
Uh, no.
You're continuing it, no, so it'll be.
We stated it, we stated it on the record that we are continuing it till the next meeting, which is May twenty-eighth.
For Cambridge. Yep.
I filed it somewhere. Okay.
Okay, they get piled up.
And moving on to I W C twenty twenty-one dash zero six R dash A one, file number one three seventy-six. Cambridge sixty-four Cambridge slash four Independence Drive. Proposed modification to reduce the net fill quantity and modify the method of wetland restoration. Astro Land Holdings LLC and Space of the Land Holdings LLC applicant. Mary Blackburn, Solly Engineering LLC representative. This is continuing from.
Good evening, I'm Mr. Commissioner, for the record, my name is E. Finn. I'm the attorney, I'm here representing the applicants on this uh uh application for amendment of prior approval. I wanted to start off uh tonight's presentation by addressing some of the questions that were raised by commissioners uh at the end of the last hearing. Also spend a little time uh responding to some of the claims made by the intervenor's attorney. So starting off with the questions that were posed at the last hearing. One of the questions asked was the difficulty in finding fill to fill the hole back to the way the, the last application. Well, that required four hundred ninety-three thousand cubic yards of fill. And that uh conjunction with the excavation fill permit, that was part of this whole thing. Once we got an approval from this commission for the restoration project, we had to go to inland, I'm sorry, we had to go to planning and zoning to get an excavation fill permit. It was that planning and zoning that they uh made the approval condition on a material acceptance procedure. Very rigorous, uh, even when beyond sort of what the D E P considers clean fill because we're not allowed to use asphalt for any fill being brought to this property. And it's because of the difficulty in finding that type of fill that we've had to come back before you to find a different way of hy, of hydrating this wetland in rural pool number two. So uh, you wanted corroboration about the difficulty in finding that fill. We submitted a letter on Monday from Derek Jones of W S P. W S P is a global environmental consulting company. Mister Jones uh long looked at the letter submitted in C V. I looked at it briefly, he is a geologist by training and also a licensed environmental professional in the state of Connecticut. The letter was submitted uh to staff on Monday. I don't know if it was distributed to you yet or not, but it does cover this question. Let me put that up page. I don't want to read the whole thing to you, but I do think it's important that you hear this tonight because I do think it will addresses your concern about why it's so difficult to find fill. To whom it may concern, W S P U S A has prepared this letter to document the ongoing difficulty in identifying acceptable material for fill import at the assemblage of land known as sixty-four Cambridge Drive and four Independence Drive in Monroe. As you know, the restoration remediation plan approved by the Inland Wetlands Commission on September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one and the excavation fill permit is approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on December seventh, two thousand twenty-three included the placement of an estimated four hundred ninety-three thousand cubic yards of fill. A material acceptance procedure dated August twenty twenty is part of the approved plans and delineates the requirements and the procedure for accepting or not any imported material to the site. It includes a rigorous, rigorous sampling and analytical protocol to demonstrate that any imported material meets the definition of clean fill as well as an owner's certification required. In addition, the excavation fill permit lists asphalt as a prohibited intake material for the reducing available suitable material. Unfortunately, given the extended commercial and industrial history of Connecticut and surrounding areas, urban redevelopment projects that are the most abundant resource for fill materials in our region invariably exhibit detectable pollutants that provide evidence of release. Evidence of release would likely result in material failing to meet the material acceptance procedure, which therefore severely, severely limits the fill available for placement at this site. Based on our experiences with material acceptance applications for this site, one can estimate that the filling anticipated under the existing redevelopment plan would require decades to complete. So uh, Mister Jones is actually available on the Zoom for any questions uh by the commission regarding his, this letter or any other aspects of the opinions that he's rendered uh in connection with the, the original application here. In addition, there is further corroboration about the difficulty in finding fill that meets this material acceptance procedure. And so um, let me get into that for just a second. Uh, we mentioned the last time that an expert was jointly hired by this commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission to monitor the, the project that was approved. That the fill that was onsite that was going to be placed, any fill that was going to be brought to the site was going to be monitored by an independent third-party expert paid for by the applicant and chosen and hired by you and the Planning and Zoning Commission jointly. Now, that independent expert was a gentleman by the name of Bill Heiple of N Safe. And he testified, we, we, we tried to find evidence of, of, of Mister Heiple's views on this. Mister Heiple testified at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of May fourth, two thousand twenty-three regarding the difficulty that the owner was having finding fill. And uh, we submitted the minutes from that May fourth uh twenty twenty-three Planning and Zoning Commission also to you. I, my guess is you haven't had a chance to read that either. Uh, I do want to just uh read to you uh part of the minutes. Again, these are the minutes from the Planning and Zoning Commission, Mister Heiple, from Mister Heiple's presentation to that commission. Again, he was expert jointly hired by both this commission and Planning and zoning. And the minutes reflect that uh Commissioner Maeyne asked at Mister Heiple's observation of the site is completed. Mister Heiple stated the current contract expires at the end of June and was to observe the imported fill. He explained the owner is currently having trouble finding suitable fill. That was of uh May fourth, two thousand twenty-three. And for reasons that we've already discussed based on Derek Jones and from the testimony of the applicant's engineer, finding fill for this project has been next to impossible. I think we explained last time that we've been able to get seventy cubic yards of fill. That's it. And that's in a process of maybe three, four years. And so that's why we've come to you as an alternative plan to hydrate wetland uh two and rural pool two. The good news is, is that when you originally approved this uh restoration project, there's a huge question mark about whether wetland two and rural pool could be brought back, whether it was so damaged that no matter how you hydrated it, whether it was by sheet flow or was it, or whether it was by pumping, that it might not come back. Well, we have pumped, maybe not as continuously as we might have hoped because of issues with the utility company. But the evidence is, is that that uh wetland rural pool two can be restored and hydrated by pumping. So that's a huge question mark that was faced this commission at the original approval that has been proven not to be an issue anymore. Moving on, um, we committed you all were requested a site visit until last week. I know some of you couldn't make the site visit, many of you were there, which is great. I don't know if you have any questions about the site visit. They're probably better addressed by Kevin Solly or, or Phil Kenny. I, I just want to um speak briefly about that. The site visit included both the eastern side of the property, which is where wetlands and rural pools two, three, and four are located. Site visit also included looking at the western side of the property where wetlands one, I believe, is located. So just a reminder that the purpose of this application to amend, that's pending before you is to uh, is to amend the remediation plan to substitute the method by which wetland number two is going to be hydrated. With respect to the other wetlands, one, three, and four, nothing in this application to amend is really relevant to, with the works of those wetlands. My understanding is that those wetlands and rural pools are doing basically fine now and that there is no need to artificially hydrate them or to restore sheet flow to those wetlands. Now, uh, again, moving on. At the last hearing, there was a question from the commission or one or two commissioners about the status reports about the project over the years. And as mentioned last time, as part of the commission's approval, there was a condition of approval. I'm reading from your inland wetlands approval, uh, the original approval, this is dated September twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. There was this on page four of that approval, which you guys should have, there's subsection C. I alluded to this earlier, but let me just read you the condition. The owner, meaning the applicant, will provide funds for regular slash periodic inspections by a neutral third-party company with proper certifications be chosen and hired by the inland wetlands commission. This professional will develop inspection criteria and provide written and verbal reports to the inland wetland commission. Yes, this inspection will include performance of the well and pumping restoration process of all included wetland and rural pools and any other criteria that be defined by the third-party company. This monitoring shall continue for the duration of the restoration project. So my client, as you know, Bill Heiple, events stage was hired by this commission and the P and Z to serve as that expert. He was the expert for this commission and we understand was available to both this commission and the planning and zoning enforcement officer and inland wetlands agent to provide updates about the project. My client had no, has no authority over Mister Heiple. We, we didn't control him, he, we paid him, but he was your expert. It would be, it would be inappropriate for us to be reaching out to Mister Heiple uh to provide reports, that, that should, should come from you all. And, but the good news is, is nothing slipped through the cracks. We did find that um, that Mister Heiple did give a report to Planning and Zoning. We believe he probably also gave a report to inland wetlands or was giving reports to Mister Schultz. Uh, some of the predecessors to Kathleen and Andrew. Um, so nothing slipped through the cracks here. And Mister Heiple's uh remarks to the Planning and Zoning Commission uh, I think are basically good news. He's, Mister Heiple said, and again, I'm reading from the minutes from that May fourth, two thousand twenty-three uh meeting. Mister Heiple started steps, started with a report for the mixed debris pile. He shared photos on a shared screen of the completed processing of this pile. He explained the grade of the quarry was raised by about twelve feet using approximately fifty-eight thousand square yards of the processed material from the mixed debris pile. He noted the material observed was consistent with the material approved by the town for use. Mister Heiple reviewed a detailed grade count of the materials that were and were not observed. Mister Heiple, uh, sorry, Commissioner Maeyne asked when Mister Heiple visited the site in his professional opinion, is he comfortable with everything happening at the site? Mister Heiple stated that given the industrial use of the area, yes, he was satisfied with the use of materials at the site. Commissioner Condon, again, these are planning and zoning commissioners, but they are just as interested in this project as you are. So Commissioner Condon asked if the property was still being filled. Mister Heiple said the processing of the mixed debris pile is complete and any future material will be important to complete the filling. And then I, I read you earlier about Mister Heiple uh indicating that the, this current contract uh ends in June and that the owner was having trouble finding suitable fill material. Now, again, I'm going to move on, I hope I'm being fairly efficient here. Um, I wanted to briefly reply to the claims made by the intervenor at the last meeting. One of the claims was that um he needed to get a permit from the D E P to operate a solid waste facility. Well, the first answer is frankly, with all respect, that's not within your permit, that's within D E P's purview. But this is an issue that uh the intervenor has raised repeatedly and has always been rejected. And in case you're worried at all, there is a Supreme Court case in Connecticut that provides that if you're placing clean fill on a property, you do not need a, a D E permit for a storage waste facility. It's a Supreme Court case. Um, and again, raised often by the intervenor and uh in pre, with regard to previous applications, always rejected. The intervenor has repeatedly claimed that we, that the exhaustive testing of this site has not been sufficient. Again, this claim has been rejected by this commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission on prior occasions. Next, the intervenor claimed at the last hearing that the site is a mess. That, that uh, I am confident now that you've seen the site or photographs of the site that have been taken recently that you will reject this based on your own observations. This site is no longer a mess. That it's been sufficiently cleaned up. I think it looks good. Granted, it hasn't been as filled as high as we might have hoped, but still, it is a, they've done a miraculous job, I think, in getting this site remediated. Now, the intervenors. Now, the intervenor's modus operandi throughout these applications has been to try to cast dispersion on the applicant. And one of the things that really, I think, is unfair of a point that come that, that the intervenor comes back repeatedly has to do with who, who was really responsible for the damage caused to this property. Okay? I just want to give you some dates. My clients bought this property on May 13, 2019. For well over a decade, probably going back at least 13 years prior to 2019, the prior owner had substantially over excavated this property, basically turning it into a quarry and dug down far enough to expose the water table at a small area of the excavation. Now, the prior owner had received some permitting from this commission to do some of the work, but no one disagrees that he far exceeded the prior permitting. Six months after my clients purchased this property, on November 13, 2019, six months later, the inland wetlands agents issued a notice of violation. That's what brings us here originally, and that was brings us here today. Itemizing in detail the issues and the violations that had existed on this property for a long period of time. Right from the issuance of the notice of violation, my clients quickly and readily agreed to address the notice of violation. So notice of violation was debated, dated November 13, 2019. We were in discussing the notice of violation with this commission within a month, December 11, 2019. It's when we first had any discussions with this commission about the NLV. Again, within less than a month after it was issued. Now, the intervenor has repeatedly claimed before this commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals, and then numerous appeals to the court, that my clients are significantly responsible for the condition of this property at the time the notice of violation was issued. That is just not true. Now, I'm not sure how relevant it is, but they think it's relevant. I think they, they want to get you to think that we're bad actors. We haven't been bad actors. We acted, we only bought the property six months before the notice of violation was issued, and we've been here multiple times trying to address this issue. But there's no way, there's no way that within six months we could have dug anywhere close to what this help hole was when we bought, that, that you saw it, right? It was 13 years of digging. We only owned the property for six months before the notice of violation issued. So this idea that my client is somehow significantly responsible for the condition of this property is not fair. Almost finished. Now, I think it important to reiterate that we are not starting from scratch before you on this application to amend the restoration or remediation approvals. It's already been extensive vetting of this, extensive hearing about this project. This project really comes down to how to rehydrate Wetland and Viral Pool number 2. There are some other tweaks that Kevin went into last time. I think there are major concerns, but if you adjust to that, Kevin can discuss that with you. But really, this is not a complicated math. How are we going to rehydrate Wetland number 2 and Viral Pool number 2? Now that we've demonstrated it can be done by pumping water into it, that seems to me the most elegant solution and has the benefit of not taking decades. Your original approval, I'm not going to read to you, but if you read your original proof, you will see that this commission felt that it was important to get this property remediated and restored as soon as possible. There are deadlines in that, in the condition saying, we want this done within 60 days or we want this done within 180 days. And so time is important. Getting this project into useful shape is, is a priority for, I think, everyone in the town of Monroe. Just want you to know that, and you probably already know this, that, that with regard to the excavating and filling, we, we have an application that's pending for planning and zoning as well. So they're going to get a look at this as well. Obviously, their purview and your purview are not coextensive. And so, but just want you to remind you that we have to go before Planning and Zoning as well. And I think that's, that's it. I'll ask if there's any questions for me. Otherwise, Mr. Johnson on the Zoom, Mr. Kenny is here, and our engineer, Ken Solley, is here.
Also a friendly reminder that the intervenor also has the opportunity tonight to speak. I think last time we let the applicant speak and anyone from the applicant's team that wanted to, then we let the intervenor speak. And then we had dialogue between the commission and whoever they felt appropriate to ask questions after that. If I, that's at your discretion if you want to. I believe he's online.
Well, let's finish with the applicant.
Yeah, I believe the, the intervenor's legal representative is online.
Okay. All right. Do we have any questions for the applicant?
So the, the property was purchased six years ago, 2019, May. And you have some responsibility to do some investigation of the property before you buy it. So it's been five and a half years since you issued a violation. You didn't go back and sue the previous owner or you just, you just haven't been able to do what's needed in the last five and a half years. Did you ask at any point to reduce to 493,000 cubic yards or, or change the rigor of sampling and analytical protocol? Or did you think about using materials from nearby projects like the one at Purdy Hill and Main Street, the quarry there? We took quite a lot of material out of there. What, what have, what have you done in five and a half years about getting this material? You've had a, a request out there for the material, I assume, but nothing happened. So you don't want to be called the bad guy, but that was five and a half years ago.
Well, just to be clear, we, the notice of violation was issued in 2019.
Uh huh.
Okay. We filed an application originally with this commission that calls for bringing in 900,000 cubic yards of material. Okay? And also called for, had a development plan connected to it. This commission made it clear to us that they thought that it's going to, 900,000 cubic yards was too much filled. It was going to take too long to do the project. And they pointed out to us that when it comes to a restoration remediation plan, you need the, you shouldn't have a development plan as part of that. So that application was not approved. We had additional discussions and we came back with another plan. That was the plan for 490,000 cubic yards. I also, I, I want to keep going, but also we bought the property knowing of its condition. Okay? So we're not saying we're not responsible for that. And whether we had a lawsuit against the prior owner or not, I, I respect this, which is not really relevant to remediating and installing the property and addressing the NLV. So that's, that's, I've answered that. Now I want to go on to, so what happened after we got the approval here? We got the approval here. We went to Planning and Zoning to get the excavation fill permit. Okay? It was planning and zoning. The intervenor and the, the Planning and Zoning Commission was very concerned about the type of fill that should be used at this property. And frankly, members of this commission were also concerned about that. And so that's why this stringent material acceptance procedure was put in, in, in place. So we got that approval. We then go to court, then the intervenor appeals of both the approvals, both the inland wetlands approval and the excavation fill permit approval. The court says that with respect to the planning and zoning approval, the Planning and Zoning Commission did not have the power to grant waivers. Even other regulations provide they can provide, they can grant waivers. That the regulate, the planning and zoning regulations in the town of Monroe are effective in allowing or authorizing the Planning and Zoning Commission to grant waivers. The only one who can grant a waiver is the zoning board of appeals. Okay? Now, it takes about a year or a year and a half for one or two people is filed until you get a decision. In the meantime, Mr. Smith, we are still going forward. We are still using material on site. It's a lot of material on site. I think it was like 280,000 cubic yards of material. We're using a lot of material on site to begin the filling, filling up the, the hole. So we didn't need to start to get extra imported fill from offsite while we had all this other material available on site to begin the filling project. It, the approvals here and the discussions here made it clear that 490,000 cubic yards of fill is a tremendous amount of fill. It can't be graded and filled and placed and sorted or whatever in, in, in a short period of time. Now, Kevin can probably speak to that better than I can. It takes a lot of time. And so we've been at it. We haven't sort of been sitting on our hands. We've been at it. We've elevated the property from, I think, around three,
you know, sure, Kevin Solley, for the record, licensed contractor here, say, Kevin Solley here. We, we raised the deepest reaches of the site, elevation around 380 up to a elevation of 420. So there was a tremendous amount I could have done. And just to provide a little bit more clarity on the timeline, because I know there's concerns about the timeline, that there hasn't been action. So the violation was issued in 2019. We came before the commission immediately to address that and to come up with a plan on how to proceed. We filed that application in 2020. Because of COVID rules, that application was allowed to last nine months. And it wasn't until December of 2020 where the commission said, let's pump the brakes on this 900,000 cubic yards, remove the, the, the development component of the, of the application, start over. So then it was 2021, we had to start over. Came back to the zoning commission, went to Planning and Zoning, as attorney Finn indicated. Then the intervenor, who's been a unopponentable to this project, if anything happened here throughout the duration, they then opposed everything. We had to go through an approval process in 2021. We got approvals from both wetlands and planning and zoning. They then appealed those decisions. They forced us to go back to zoning board appeals to get a variance, which they granted. We then had to modify the zoning regulations to address the technical deficiency that the courts established existed in the zoning regs. So it's been, so there's been active, active focus on cleaning up the property, addressing the things that happened before since we had the approval to actually do that work. It just took quite a bit of time to get there because of the extensive opposition and, you know. So it just, it, it wasn't, I don't believe it was, attorney indicated. And for those of you who were at the previous site walk, went through the previous history and then have seen it today, it's been considerably improved from what the condition was.
So just a quick follow on then. Out of the 493,000 cubic yards, how many yards have been placed into, back into the area?
Approximately 287,000 yards have been on site placed compacted in the lifts and essentially sorted through. That was previously imported, tested, analyzed, observed by third parties, and all need to be done in accordance with all the federal standards and requirements.
So now I would just request that we hear from the intervenor because it seems with, it's, it's portrayed to us that, you know, they're not really being responsive and trying to negotiate it in some kind of settlement or something that's.
Intervener is, was it intervenor is for a moment. An intervenor is, and there's, there's a list of who it is, but it's basically anybody that they have an interest in the property. So this intervenor happens to be a representative of a neighbor. But there's no settlement agreement between the two of them. They're just interested in this application and therefore they're granted intervenor status. So they are allowed to speak. They are allowed to present information. They're allowed to cross-examine the applicant and the applicant's consultants. But there is no settlement that has to occur between the two of them.
Just trying to find some middle, literally, middle ground that we can work with here.
They're not in litigation with each other.
They're not required to meet. He's not a mediator.
Trying to find a solution to this, all or nothing.
They have a right to, they have a right to.
Be part of the process.
To be part of this, and they are.
Okay.
They are.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
I'll set commissioners. I, I hope I answered your.
Yeah, well, sufficient. Thank you very much, sir.
I just, on the subject of intervention, I don't know if this commission has dealt with intervention before, but it's very important that it's not as simple as it sounds. Okay? Because an intervention, intervenor has the burden of showing that whatever conduct they're questioning is reasonably likely to have the effect of unreasonably polluting, impairing, or destroying the public trust. It's, it's torturous language. I'm going to read it to you one more time. They have to show that it's reasonably likely to have the effect of unreasonably polluting, impairing, or destroying. So here, we have a restoration project that was meant to help restore and remediate this property. It's hard to believe that a remediation project could ever really cause unreasonable pollution unless you were bringing in fill that was going to be worse than allowing the wetlands to remain not, not, not operable. So please bear in mind, and you may, I've had, and other commissions have asked the town attorney to come in and explain the intervention process because it is so complicated. You just can't get up there and say, oh, this may cause environmental damage or this could cause environmental damage. Not enough. They have to show that this activity has a likelihood of causing damage. And it's unreasonable. If you balance things out, that it's more, it's going to cause more harm to allow the project to go forward than if you didn't allow the project to go forward. So very important to keep that in mind. And I also want to state for the record that the intervention petition itself cannot just be generic. It just can't be saying, I think this is going to unreasonably pollute this area. That intervention petition itself has to have specific factual allegations. And that has not occurred in this case. It's my position that the intervention, it is not sufficient. So I want to state that for the record. Any questions, man?
Well, Commissioner Stewart did ask questions. I apologize, I'm jumping the gun here on things that you asked, but I think there were questions about, there were questions about the pumping process and who was going to be responsible for ensuring that that remained consistent 10 years from now, 20 years from now. And I don't know that we have an answer to that, and I'm curious.
I think Cario also mentioned, like, if there is a failure, there's the opportunity for it to, like, ping a cell phone and things of that nature. And the question is, is like, whose cell phone? Who's local enough that's going to, you know, be responsible for being here? Are you guys going to be in contact with someone that would be responsible then for coming out and doing due diligence? Just to piggyback on top of that.
Sure, again, Kevin Solley, for the record. So we did provide, honestly, there is some information before you. We did provide a lot of response to the town's years, comments, and second round comments. You know, a lot of them were, were in minor negotiations. She wants to, we're also hoping to receive comments from the intervenor, which still haven't come. But in that response that's in your packet today, we did actually provide some recommendations, for the record, in Bill Kenny's report. Essentially, we were, we were recommending that there should be monitoring twice a month over the period of March through June for the initial implementation. And then monitoring once a month for the same period for two years to ensure the effectiveness of that pumping. And then monitoring of the well remediation. Third base of species should continue for three years after remediation activity. So we did propose that. There was also some discussion regarding, the engineer had a comment about, you know, testing the water in the well. We absolutely will follow applicable well requirements with, with public health. And, you know, we're happy that, you know, if the town wants to have third-party testing, we understand that. An annual testing is recommended by OPA and DPH for private wells. So we're, we're not opposed to any of those, you know, recommendations or, or conditions that the commission may want to put on that. We want to make sure that we're proposing fixed, that's going to be effective and long-term.
I think the question was, who's going to maintain it over the years?
I think the question was, who's going to maintain it over the years?
We had also asked about how much it was run. What was the history of what was done?
Unfortunately, the ownership does not have records of the pumping. It was done through, you know, through a very large pump that was used partly for watering activities as fill was being placed. And I think, you know, Mr. Kenny, we talked more about his inspections while that was ongoing and the positive effect it did have on those wetlands. But we don't have records of it. Mr. Kenny and our office did work together to come up with calculations to ensure that a pumping volume is consistent with what the, you know, average annual precipitation is and has been and would be if the entire watershed was restored. So we have provided some recommendations on the, you know, wells and the frequency and the rates and volumes that we want to use to rehydrate those wetlands.
So, I mean, that was, my recollection is that was part of the permit. Your permit was to do this. And it seems like you didn't do it. Is that incorrect?
Well, the permit didn't, and I think Attorney Finn, you know, kind of read through those conditions earlier and talked about what Bill Heple was doing.
Well, the monitoring, I appreciate how he clarified the monitoring and I can understand, I think there's a gray area there, but I agree with you. I guess it was, may have been the town's responsibility to order the consistent testing. But I am, you guys were running the pump and it was your proposal to run that pump and rehydrate the wetlands. And it may have happened, apparently it happened one spring, but there's been, I don't know how many.
Well, it happened, it happened probably for a good solid calendar year while that de-watering and fill placement was being...
It was supposed to happen for 10 years.
And as we talked about at the last hearing, one of the issues, one of the challenges that was faced was the, there was an existing well on-site that was previously used for water or for dust suppression. And when the Section 4 Pepper Street Business Park re-subdivision was completed and the cul-de-sac at the entrance to this site was finished as part of that work and the coordination utility companies, because there was no more activity on the site, they turned the power off to the site. So the existing well that was there, one, it was determined that the well that was in there didn't have really sufficient power to actually do this in a long-term rehydration standpoint. So that's why this application proposes the permanent installation of actually multiple pumps with solar power, with that redundancy to ensure that there is adequate power supply to do that.
What kind of controllers are you proposing?
Well, so as part of any type of application like this, we want to get this, you know, we have the desired flow rate and yield that we're looking for based on the calculation stuff. We need to then, if we can get this approved, we need to then go to the well manufacturer or the pump manufacturer and the well company and say, this is what we need to get. They would then go through that design of, you know, specing the specific wells and the controllers and things like that. So we haven't done that yet. If the commission wants to see that as part of this modification, we're happy.
I'm going with a little bit on a tangent here, but how, let's say this does get approved. From the date of approval, full approval, planning and zoning and inland wetlands, how long is it going to take you to get the wells constructed and up and running? Because we've already talked about that there's been a lag where they're not being rehydrated right now.
We would, our hope, we have, we're in our second hearing with wetlands. I think we're supposed to open our planning and zoning hearing tomorrow night. We're fully expecting all of the opposition again, whether it's unfounded or true. We're going to go through that process. But theoretically, we can get this approved in the next two months. I believe it's the ownership intent to have this installed by the end of the summer or early fall and have these wells with the solar panels in and installed and functioning before, you know, before the end of the fall.
Yeah, it's on time. So just for this commission's understanding, I did reach out to both Rob McCarthy and Bill Hepley at NSAFE. And I believe I found the original contract for their work with the commissions. They, I've not been able to get them to respond back to my inquiries from them. So I have not been able to be in contact with them. But I did reach out to them immediately after our last meeting. It looks like, I was hoping that they could confirm that the document I'm looking at was the final contract document with them. But it looks like they were under contract for monitoring for the well and wetland restoration for five years. So I was hoping to be able to have them to come out before this meeting. But unfortunately, was not able to even communicate with them, let alone have that be scheduled. Their backfilling and grade restoration, monitoring, the material oversight, all of those were only for two years. So that part of their contract would have technically expired at this point. So that would be something we'd have to review. I was trying to just get the highest priority well, restoration monitoring, to see if they could come out and do something prior to this commission. But unfortunately, was not able to reach them. But I will continue to try to get them to come back.
Anybody else have any other questions?
I know that if this were to happen, I know that irrigation companies make, and I've got one at my work, that make, you know, Wi-Fi and cellular controllers that will, you know, link to moisture sensors and have apps that you can see right on your phone. The town could actually monitor this thing. And you can enter how much water and how long it's going to pump and all that stuff can be done. Still, my concern that when it breaks, you know, I don't expect, I'd expect Andrew to be on there every day going, is it working today? Is it working today? Or, you know, they go belly up or they decide not to do it again. We start all this over again. So I still need to think about how to arrange a situation that it gets, it continues indefinitely. It's a long time.
Well, I'll say that, you know, this owner, when he acquired this property, he acquired all of the problems associated with it. And anything that happens with this property is going to run with that property and the land. And this owner is going to be obligated to comply with everything associated with it. And any future owner is going to be obligated to comply with any condition that's done as part of this. So I think that there's, there was also some discussion, and I believe you brought a comment to, perhaps there's a bond that can be posted to, you know, further ensure that that happens. And I think the applicant is willing to do whatever is necessary to ensure that everyone feels comfortable that this is the right path forward and that the appropriate medical methods are in place to ensure that it does get done. And ultimately and eventually, if a future land use application were to come through on this property, that pump can then get tied directly to that building system just like any septic pump or, you know, some pump or anything else, because always get built right into their, those, you know, that building control system and security system. So, you know, the future development of this property ultimately would even provide additional security that this is something that's going to get constantly monitored, maintained, and enforced as already, as part of this potential approval and any future approvals.
I know this was something you were thinking about, so I don't know if this has already been resolved in your head. And maybe this is a moot point because you guys have already been rehydrating it with a well. But, and this might be for Mr. Kenny. Is there any concern that you're taking, you know, we're expecting stormwater and typically stormwater and adjacent groundwater rehydrate those wetlands? We're now taking water from a different part of the earth, you know, and hydrating it. Has there been any analysis on, and I don't know, as a layperson, is there the pH balance or the iron, you know, concentration or things like that that's going to potentially change the way that we would typically expect that wetland to function?
So as part of the previous applications, all these concerns and claims that this site was contaminated and the water was contaminated, the applicant went and did testing and provided analysis from WSP and I believe Derret Chalmers, who was actually on-site. They tested all the water, they tested all the material. Everything was clean. Everything was in accordance with all, you know, applicable standards.
I'm not so worried about contaminants as much as just like natural non-contaminant items that you would be typically a normal, but maybe for the specific ovinal pool, which is a really sensitive ecosystem. And for another wetland, is there something that is just, you know, naturally in groundwater that could change the way that we typically want it to function? And again, maybe it's a moot point because it's been hydrated by the wells anyway. So if there was something that was already occurring, it probably already occurred. But I didn't know if that was thought of before the even the existing well hydration took place.
Good value. And I've always looked at this, it will be, it will not be exactly what it would have been before it is. But even with the restoration that you already approved, and that had 10 years of well, well water to be pumped to the wetland. So that was already considered, that the water chemistry might be different. pH is probably one thing that you're most likely to have a difference with the groundwater is going to be more based on purpose water or acidic. Right? But, so with the existing approval, it involves, it has approved 10 years of well water. It's my opinion that what's most important is the volume of water. Once it gets in there, it mixes with the organic that are in the soil. That that will start to alter if the issue. As it would, when rainwater falls and it runs through the ground and it changes the pH of the water. So I think, one, it's already approved for well water, but not forever. And two, that it won't be exactly the same, but it will be, it'll be great. So, and with the existing approval, it's got 10 years of well water, assuming it took 10 years to fill this thing up. And then after that, it was going to receive water from, from the development, treated according to those BMPs and everything. And then running through a buffer that then goes down to the well. So nothing that's been proposed or approved today puts it back to pristine forested water. And so I think the main thing, getting a volume there so that we have water that it's hydrated and it's, there's pooled water during that breeding season is the most important objective and that the water is not contaminated.
If we're not potentially able to get the wells up and running until fall, what is the potential hazards? What's the potential, potential weather events, droughts, things like that that could have a lasting impact on those wetlands that once we get the wells up and running, they're not able to rebound back to their current state?
So all of that is already, and so at this point, to get ready for the next breeding season, if they're running by fall, that would be great. Because that's when you start to, that's when vegetation comes into its essence and is stopping pulling water out of the ground and releasing it to the atmosphere, using it and releasing it, transpiring that water. So it's, it's in that fall that we start to build back up the groundwater. And any water, when you look at the calculations that we did, the forested landscape is using just about every water, all the water that falls on it for the most part during the growing season. And it's after, at the end of the growing season, during the winter, that's when you're starting to build it back up. So, yeah, it wouldn't be contributing a heck of a lot of water to it right now once we're into the long season now. So this is a great, this is good timing to get it ready for the next season. We can get through these approvals.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. So James DeMayo again. Considering the fact that the applicant already has the approval for the short-term use of the, of the well, and I understand that there's no power currently there. Are there, does the applicant have any plans or making any efforts to get the existing well back up and running in the meantime? Considering that was the mandate of the original permit and approval, like I understand there's no power now, but essentially these systems could currently be utilized now.
So, so the, when, when, when the wetlands were being rehydrated via the wells, the existing well that was there was, that was previously used for dust suppression on the property was showered and then would have been preferred. And it didn't have the pump capacity to really get that water from where it is on the west side of the site to then run all the way across the property and then up the hill to the well. So because there's, you know, permitting processes, you're getting a well, we want to try to get this approval as quick as possible so we can start that process with the Department of Public Health. So we can put in permanent wells with the appropriate depth, with the appropriate sized pumps to actually get this moving as quickly as possible. So there, there, I don't, we haven't, James, given it real consideration to see how we can try to get that other existing well to give us the flow that we think we need because we don't think it can be powered.
But even not doing the flow, like the flow that you think you need, just, so, you know, the applicant, or you guys have stated so far that during this process, you have utilized that existing well for the purpose of rehydrating the wetland. So it has already been used. So the pump has the ability to feed the wetland. So my question just is, has alternatives to powering this well to get it back up so it's not just down for a set period of time?
Even just for temporarily basis?
Until decisions have been made.
Right. What we, we found that the capacity of that one well wasn't sufficient. And we had success on water, watering from the large hole. From the large hole, that water is what was able to get the bottom into the wetland to the six...
When is the, when is the breeding season and when is it over? And when is it too late to even try?
Well, I think it's over all form.
At this, because it's breeding and so they have the laterage.
When does that, when does that happen?
That's like in March.
Okay, so it's too late this year to do anything?
And so you start to build it up in the fall next year, or the fall this year.
Were you, was your, is your plan to pump all year round? Or are you going to turn it off in July and say, okay, there's no point in pumping in the middle of the summer?
To pump, well, and so we did a water balance monthly. It's, and we came up with how many days of pumping, pumping at 15 gallons per minute. And it is pumping from September through April. About two weeks, the last two weeks of September and then starting and then through first two weeks of April.
And it's all the way, all the way through the winter?
Pretty much. Once you get, you know, we found that...
Don't worry about those pipes freezing.
Well, you know, it's not unlike a sun pump that's pumping all through the, through the winter and discharging onto the ground. I see it all the time when I'm out mapping wetlands, people's sun pumps running. So...
Yeah, but that thing, if the pump goes down, it freezes up and then you're not, you're not getting water through it for the next, you know, until the weather warms up and thaws it out, which could be, you know, a month in the winter.
Or, or if, worst case, the pipe breaks and the pump still goes, you're still reading that water's getting there, but it doesn't necessarily mean it is.
Well, I think that's why we, Bill, recommended, you know, inspections twice a month to be able to visually confirm that beyond the output from the controller itself.
Those inspections twice a month, though, for how long?
I think you recommended it for the first two years or for the first, for the first real peak season and then go to monthly thereafter. So it would be essentially through next April by monthly inspections. And then monthly inspections thereafter.
What about 20 years? Like what happens in 20 years? This, you're rehydrating mechanically. So if it's, if it's only monitored for that long, what happens in 20 years? If the same thing happens, if the pipe freezes or the pump breaks?
We're, we're not proposing to, to, what? We're not proposing to, to, we're not proposing not to pump. We're not proposing to look at it for five years and then never look at it. And I think that ultimately, this is, this, this application is to let us to do something now without any building there. And then once a building is, is proposed, then it'll be wired into that building system and then will be additional conditions put on that as part of any future application. The, the, the owner and the applicant recognizes that this is a condition that he has to meet and maintain and uphold throughout the whole issuance program.
Is there, is there any, and I'm just negative, I guess. In that, is there any other wetlands project on the property that would, that could be done? Wetlands creation, something else where it would be self-sustaining?
Be completely independent of these wetlands?
Well, what if in the next couple of years, all of a sudden there's plenty of this clean fill available? And they still haven't filled up the whole?
You're not going to get, you're not going to get clean fill. You're not going to get it where you're not paying for it.
No, I.
Cause it's too expensive to move. I mean, if you have clean fill, someone's buying it.
But.
You're not, you're not.
Trying to find some alternatives here.
Hypothetic.
Yeah.
I have a question on that clean fill, so.
Wait, can we, can we answer question number one first, which is the idea of any other project?
There, uh, you certainly could make another one. And, uh, this is an interesting situation where it's not that this wetland has been eliminated. It's still a well that meets the legal definition of a wetland. It's just not functioning at the level that it had to function yet. It's not functioning to support the breeding and development. Looking for our full species, but it's still a well.
You're not talking about abandoning the wetlands. You want something in addition to?
I'm not talking about destroying them. I'm just saying, is there, could you, could you build a, could you build a burn pool up the hill that got enough water to work? Could you, could you put more wetlands somewhere else that maybe wouldn't be as good, but it, it, it solves the problem? I don't know if it's good enough for the commission, but.
On the low, on the low ground where, where the development.
I'm throwing it out. Is there something else, something else that's an, another alternative? Wetland creation rather than trying to, to make this thing work for the next thousand years?
Okay, there is an opportunity to create another pool, but you could create wetlands. Cause the burn pool, you need that significant forested.
I guess we can, condition of approval is just say it's got to be maintained and monitored.
I'd like, I'd like to also hear from their attorney on methods that he would propose to make sure that this thing is, is, is funded for, whatever. And even if it's to, to create some endowment or something, I mean, that idea of getting a bond. I mean, I, I get bonds all the time and it doesn't, you know, it's not something that, oh, it died, the guy's not doing anything. Now we're going to pull a bond, we're going to hire a contractor, we're going to fix it.
I think it'd have to be a cash bond. I think we would accept a surety bond.
Leaving that puts that, puts that, you know, work on you guys to make sure it's happening. And then when it doesn't, you have to find the time to go and, and, and fix it. And then to me, it's, it's got to be set up where it's not you, it's someone else who really cares about wells, who wants to do it. And it's got the money there to consistently pay the bills and, and take care of it.
Well, I know in, in working with other commissions that generally the way this works is that it's a condition of approval that this system has to be maintained. And if it isn't, then you're in violation of your permit. And there are sanctions, there are fines for being in violation of your permit now. You know, that, that's the way it works. So, and, and you may not know more about this commissioner's story than I do, but these retention devices, I understand that people put in to control flooding or control the outflow, that they can get clogged up. They can get sediment in them and then they stop working and then all of a sudden water is flowing everywhere because this system has not been maintained. Well, what a commission started to do, they put in a requirement, you've got to ma, you've got to maintain this. It's got to be cleaned out every so often. And we want our report that it's been cleaned out every so often. And so that's what I, I've seen now. Now, is it the magic bullet? Probably not, but it is a pretty good control. Sure. If they don't follow your conditions of the approval, they're in violation. And there's statutes and your regulations that provide for fines and, and other penalties for not complying with the permit.
That's right. I think we can put some conditions, make sure we're all on board with it. That's the way to go. All right.
Good now.
Anybody else? All right.
The, uh, question for attorney Finn. If you could just clarify, did you, you were talking about the current, the, the, the current owners. Were you saying that they didn't know that there was a violation on the previous owners or the violation didn't come until afterwards? Did the, did, did the current owners know that this was over excavated and, and did they know the previous history? Or did they not do their due diligence or were they not, uh, or was this information not disclosed to them?
I'm not really sure of the answer to that question. I know it before prior, I think before the planning and zoning commission, some of the commissioners were shocked that this property got into the condition that it did without someone from the town coming out and saying, you're violating this permit, you're violating that permit. So there were, from what I understand, years that went by where neither Kathleen Gallagher or Andrew Brodman were worried about the town of Monroe, where this property seemed to have sort of been ignored or slipped through the cracks. And if, um, if I can, sorry, I, I, I don't represent the owner of this property in his real estate matter. I'm not a real estate attorney. I've never handled a closing. I've never advised a client about the purchase of a commercial property. That's not what I do. But if I, I have to assume that my client probably knew of the condition of this property, that it had been over excavated. It might've said, look, you know, the town of Monroe doesn't seem to be too concerned about this. But once this got, uh, once this was formally brought to his attention or the notice of violation was issued, he acted quickly and diligently and responsibly. Now someone might say, well, did he continue the operations to some extent? It's possible he did, but he is not responsible for the condition of this property. He's responsible legally because he bought it, but he did not cause these problems. He's responsible for them. He didn't cause them. I don't know if that's enough for you, uh, but.
The previous owner was responsible for?
Previous owner, I think is the one who caused the problem. I, he is the one who caused it.
And he's no longer involved?
He's not, he's certainly not an owner of the property. Uh, I think he, he has, because of the, he's not involved. He's not involved. There you go.
Um, and then a question just on the, um, on the clean fill. Who, who put the material acceptance procedure in place? Was that, uh, the wetlands commission? Is that dictated by the state? Why is this clean fill so hard to find? It's like there are other state jobs going on that, that require clean fill? Is there something about the procedure, the material acceptance procedure that is making it so difficult? And is that something that can be changed? Uh, what's the reasoning for having it so stringent?
I, I, I think the, I, I think, I think during the, the process that we with us before and the level of contention, we were trying to get to a place where we could have everybody feel comfortable. So we created this material acceptance protocol. We referred to the definition of clean fill by DDEP. We actually took that definition and took a bunch of things out of it because we wanted to, we, we, we wanted to make, I think the, the owner, ownership wanted to make their best effort to source this stuff and find it so they could place the fill. I think, I think, I think once that happened, um, you know, there are, there were, there were opportunities where there were projects going on, state projects, school projects, where there was some material that needed to be exported. But such as Connecticut, when, when, I think when it was evaluated, it didn't meet the strict adherence that we had created. But I'll tell you, that material probably went to other sites in town or other sites in other towns or other sites for other developments because there, the, the, it will meet the definition of clean fill. But we wanted to ensure that there wasn't anything else that, that could, you know, create a, a problem.
Okay, so if we went with a less stringent requirement for this fill and it still met the state standards of clean fill, we would be able to find that fill?
Uh, I think it would, there would be a much higher likelihood of success in, in sourcing some of that material. Yes. Now, could, could we find four hundred ninety-three thousand in the term of the permit that exists? I'm not sure.
I wouldn't mind if you could try and answer that question. Not only today, but I may look into that because ideally we would like to see it all filled back up and.
Of course, we don't want to see it filled up with.
Nuts of waste, exactly. But, but if, like he said, if you can back off the standard a little bit to what is
reasonable.
Reasonably acceptable by state standards, I think we will take that into consideration.
Well, certainly work on that with, with the.
What was the two hundred eighty-seven thousand square feet of square, square yards that I thought that had already?
That was material that was onsite and stockpiled from the previous operation that was able to be.
So that's not, that doesn't, that's not, um, that's not subtracted for four hundred ninety-three?
No, that was, four hundred ninety-three was the import.
Okay.
All the other material was, was part of the analysis was to be moved onsite. That was able to be accomplished. It was the.
So the remaining, call it just under five hundred is what you're struggling to find?
Correct.
Given standards of clean fill. So I, I agree with Andrew, like, let's see how difficult it is to get that with a more reasonable clean fill standard that is still clean, but maybe not quite as strict as what you're.
So, so, so here's the challenge with this. And I'm not sure if it's something that's that rated concern. So we have a remediation plan that's approved by this commission. Before we could even do it, we had to get an excavation and fill permit from planning and zoning that was consistent. That would then we'd have the, all the applicable requirements from two governing bodies to do this work. Right? So now if we're talking as, so from a modification standpoint, we were able to apply the same modification to remediation plan, which is before this commission and the excavation and fill permit mod, which is in front of planning and zoning. So looking at taking these things into consideration, if we want to modify our material acceptance protocol, not only would be this commission's approval, we also then need planning and zoning approval.
Well, uh, Kevin, wasn't, wasn't that, um, acceptance protocol dictated by planning and zoning and not inland wetlands?
It, it was.
So, so.
Because that's not really in their purview.
Yeah, so, so it really lies under planning and zoning's purview, whereas the inland wetland commission is just concerned with the clean fill aspect. And so it'd really just be a modification of the planning and zoning application.
I'm pretty sure we said that there couldn't be asphalt.
While we were here.
That, that, yes, that was excluded from our, that was all.
I'm assuming that's one of the big problems.
So, so in the excavation of fill permit, there was a condition.
Can you just please say the name of that?
Astro and, and space lethal handlements. So in the excavation of fill permit, there was a condition of approval in, in that approval that excluded specifically asphalt and the commission at the time, PNC commission, was focused a lot on excluding asphalt from it. There was lots of discussion and even though it meets the definition of clean fill, that was an exclusion. So that's written right in there. So there would be, I think, by reducing the standards, that would be at odds with PNC. And I think that's going to open up a can of worms. I don't think that's going to be. Now, unless this commission wanted to work jointly with planning and zoning and hold joint meetings where you had both commissions essentially having a meeting at the same time, that would allow us to have dialogue with both governing bodies. But that's something that I'm not sure staff or these commissions have done in the past.
We, not to my knowledge, it doesn't mean it hasn't happened, not to my knowledge. I think the, the instrument of doing that would have to be special meetings that we would have and.
I still think the, the question at hand is if, big if, the standard was changed, how available is this material to, and, and so I think that needs to be answered before we even decide whether or not we should have some joint session or not.
Yeah, I think maybe the question to Mr. Soli is, is to, to what extent would it have to be pulled back in order for you guys to feel confident you would have success executing the plan as it is?
Right, so our understanding is it's already very difficult. Do I ratcheting it down to including asphalt, it would improve it, but you're talking about many decades to just decades. So that's still a very long time. We think the modification application we had before you is the most expedient for everyone to get rehydrated in that, those wetlands right away. And it could be, Kevin had mentioned, you know, if, if we were to get approval from this commission and, and PNC, we could, you know, by the end of the fall, I think we could do that even sooner. We would, we could be right on it. That would, we'd need the volume that the current well is not supplying right now. So our current pumping efforts are just not yielding the amount that we want. And that's one of the main reasons we're here before, including that fill, lack of fill access. So.
Is it possible to, to do both on parallel track here? Keep pumping until such time we have enough fill to bring it back up? I mean, I'm, are they, is it a one or the other or going to be both?
I, I think it would, I, I don't think both would be too productive because to get the, to, to get it to the current approval level is we've found that it's much harder to get the fill, even if we were to get, get approval from PNC to not have such stringent standards. You're, we're still talking much further out as a timeline than we had originally anticipated and would want. And I would think this commission would want as well. We, we could get rehydrated in wetlands right away with, with, with pumps. I think maybe even by the end of the summer.
Maybe I'm not asking my question the correct way. Can you do pumps while at the same time sourcing different fill? So we're rehydrating right away while we're getting fill to fill it up. So that way in, in the next few years, you don't have to pump. You can rely on the fact that now the land has been filled.
That we're saying, I'm, I'm talking about the, what is it, about five hundred thousand more?
Four hundred.
Right, four hundred.
Four hundred and ninety.
Yeah, that, that amount is still more than, that would take more than a few. I think that would take a lot. So I, I get what you're saying and it, it makes a lot, a lot of sense. It's just the practical reality is getting that extra to do. So we would like to get pumping right away, but that would require an approval from this commission.
Right, I understand.
What you're asking is kind of what they were doing. That was their permit was to pump while they were waiting for this to come in.
Right, but now they're saying, we just want to pump. We don't want to bring in the fill. So that's what I'm asking. They're not mutually exclusive. It can't, it's not a one or the other. We can continue to pump while we're slowly filling it up. If we have to extend the, the deadline for when it's filled up by and maybe lower the standards of the quality of the soil, I think that's something we should consider. I'm not saying that we will approve it. But we could approve the pump, but I still want to see it get filled up so we don't have to rely on the pumps forever. So if we eventually get it filled up, if it takes ten years to fill it up, great, then we only have to pump for ten years, not fifty.
Well, their excavation, well, I guess you guys would be under COVID. I was going to say your permit's only a total of ten years. It's five years with a five-year extension, but if it was approved during the statutory.
It was approved.
I don't think it was approved till twenty twenty-two.
Well, the, the one approval was approved in twenty twenty-two, but then that approval was appealed by the, uh, interrogator.
Yeah. It's actually.
It had to get reapproved and that was reapproved in twenty twenty-three. So I'm not sure.
Yeah.
We don't get the timing of all the.
I was thinking, if it was done in, I forget exactly when, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, what the months are of that. They would have had, uh, fourteen years with a five-year, but, uh, so they're only, they only have ten for the excavation and fill permit. They have five years and then they have the ability to renew it for another five years. So like, we don't have decades. We have a decade, but like.
Right, no, that's what I'm saying. So but we're talking about turning it off now and saying, eh, just don't worry about filling it up ever again. And I'm saying, why not do both? Why not continue? Let's approve.
I think they have to continue to pump.
That's what I'm saying.
They are, they are, they have to keep pumping.
They would have to continue to. They would have to continue to pump if they were, if they were able to replace the watershed that was naturally.
I'm just saying, in the meantime, they're under a permit to pump while they fill. They don't have to fill, like, if they could, they could say, hey, we're going to get this all in the last year, I guess, but they still have to pump.
Let me just jump in for a second. So the date of your original approval was September 22nd, 2020. And from what I'm hearing and Derek Jones' letter, we're, we're talking decades and decades of getting fill, even if we were able to convince the planning and zoning commission to reduce the stringency of the material acceptance procedure. I just don't think there's a practical way we're going to get enough fill.
Based on what?
I want, I want you guys to do that research and confirm that or let's not speculate. Let's say if we lower the standards to this, we could do it, but if we don't, we can't. So let's, let's not speculate.
I hear you, but I, I do want to remind this commission that, and we can go back and, and, and check on this, but I have, my strong recollection is that this commission for the original approval delegated the type of fill that would be used for this site to planning and zoning. They are the one in prison, and look.
We understand that. We're just asking for a number that says, if you want to do what you're asking, we have to go to here and then let us, this commission or planning and zoning make that call. But until we have a number in front of us, it, it's hard for us to make a decision. So all, all we're asking for is just a number.
Okay.
Give us an option. We don't have to like it or approve it, we just, we'd like an option. Is that fair?
Understood, yes. I think, I think that is fair. And, and so I do want to just remind everyone that the intervenor was the strongest opponent about concerns about material being brought to this property. It's the intervenor who was, wanted everything tested, was concerned about the type of fill that was going to come to this property and was successful in helping or convincing the planning and zoning commission to place such stringent requirements on the fill.
I hear you.
I, I, I hear what you said, I think it's a reasonable request and we will, we will try to get you that information.
That's all we're looking for, just, just more information is better.
Understood.
That's fine.
Great. Any other things that we should think about or we should put on our list to come back with?
Yeah, one, one other thing. Obviously, you can't find people to bring you fill or pay you to take fill because you're, it's clean fill, why would they, why would they truck it further than they have to or, but that doesn't say you can't buy it. May not make financial sense, but I'd like to hear more on what it would cost to get clean fill to take care of this.
Clean fill that would beat this lower standard or?
Yeah, virgin clean fill, it's like perfect. Much of what we're talking about.
Just one real quick, so how many cubic yards out of the 493, how many cubic yards have you brought in in the last five and a half years?
My understanding is it's about 69 or 70 cubic yards.
69 or 70.
So we still need another 420 or so thousand cubic yards, which is a lot.
Yeah, no, without a doubt, it just, you know, if we really wanted to rehydrate the, the, this wetland, we would have kept the pumps going, using a combustion engine on a trailer. That's what we did in open pit mines.
It wa, it wasn't 70,000 yards, it was.
70.
Yards.
Okay, all right. So the amount we're still looking for to satisfy this.
490.
490,000 cubic yards of fill, okay.
Of import.
Yep, yep.
We still have the interviewer.
Yep.
Okay.
Anybody else, questions or comments? Okay. So let's bring the interviewer up.
Evening, I'm Mr. Chairman, members of the commission staff. Once again, for the record, my name is Joel Green. I practice law in Ridgeport, Los Angeles, and Green and Gross. It's my pleasure to appear before you this evening on behalf of the intervenor, Peter Metropolis, trustee. I have some remarks for the commission, but I really want to thank the commission for your comments over the last few minutes because they made so much sense. And just putting all of this in context, it was a lot said tonight, but I think the basic facts, and I think the facts are easily provable for this commission are, first of all, at the time that the current applicants bought the property, yes, the property had been badly, severely overexcavated. That overexcavation occurred over the last few years before this, these owners bought the property. These owners are extremely savvy investors and extremely savvy real estate people. I just read an article in the Connecticut Post about them, about the many, many years of real estate investing experience that they had. Be assured that when they bought this property, they understood completely what they were buying. Be assured that they had phase one, phase two, I'm sure they had every sort of environmental study done. I'm sure that they had gone over this property. I'm sure they understood all of the conditions of this property and they bought it with their eyes open and presumably, presumably as savvy investors, they bought it for a price that reflected the impaired condition of this property. The property had been overexcavated at times, and this is with all due respect to everyone here, at times, Mr. Soli's firm was involved in overseeing the work by New England Materials, by Mr. Kimball's operation before. There had been reporting, but sure enough, the property did get grossly overexcavated. My comments last, at the last meeting, were not to suggest that these applicants had done all of this overexcavating, that's not the point. The point is that after this, these applicants bought it, they kept excavating, they kept selling material. They, they sold material from the site. They sold material that was excavated and now, you know, they need fill ironically, but they were exporting fill from the site. And, uh, so they have this impaired property, they keep operating, and if there's any question that, as we say in the law, these applicants have unclean hands, this department issued a notice of violation. And I understand the comments tonight, after six months, we had a meeting and we're all working together. And then after that, the town issued a cease and desist. After that, a cease and desist. It all kept going, that's the point. We did have these hearings and I'm sure Mr. Stewart still has nightmares about these hearings that went on for so long. My client owns abutting property, 47 acres of property next door and other properties in the area. He has me here because he is deeply concerned about possible impacts on his abutting property from this project. That's why I'm here, for no other reason, he's deeply concerned about the impacts on his property. So we had these appeals and yes, attorney Finn is correct, there were two appeals, one from the ruling by this commission and one from PNC. And as I indicated at the last hearing, on the PNC side, from moment one, I said, you can't, you cannot grant this kind of approval because it violates some basic zoning law and uniformity, I won't go into it. But, you know, basically, they ignored my client, they ignored me, it was approved and sure enough, they call it a technicality, it was always a technicality from the beginning. So after, I don't know how many hours of hearings before this commission, this applicant came in and it was a hard thought application, but this applicant, applicant, these applicants walked in and said, this is the best plan. And they brought in all these consultants and we went to them. All, all of this time, all of this effort, here is the best plan and it's got to be great. And they got it approved by this commission, they went and got an excavation and fill permit from planning and zoning. I should also say that after the appeals were filed, ordinarily, applicants stopped working. In my experience as a land use attorney, no, most, in most situations when there's an appeal, people stop doing the work because it, you do so at your peril. But of course, these applicants kept rolling and they kept moving fill on the site, kept filling the site, kept regrading the site right through the deal process. Now, the applicants appeared before you and before planning and zoning. And they say what? They say it's hard to get fill. Now, great questions tonight, what evidence do you have that it's hard to get fill? What's, what do you have? What do you know, other than these applicants saying, oh, it's so hard to get fill and it's going to take forever to do it? So you're asking great questions and my client is deeply skeptical because he, he's made some calls lately. And to my client's knowledge, you can get fill. To Commissioner Stewart's point, you might have to pay for it. So the economics were never a discussion, look, when we were, before the commission on this approval, the economics were never part of it. But what's happening now apparently is the economics are apparently, I guess, a problem for the applicant, a financial issue maybe. So, uh, but they haven't even demonstrated that. They haven't even come in and said, this is not a viable project because of the economics of getting fill. I'm aware of a project in Fairfield, uh, that was approved at the circle in Fairfield where they're going to be excavating hundreds of thousands of yards of fill for this new project. That's going to be available. There's all kinds of possibilities down the line is the point. And really, what the applicant is saying is, the economics don't work for us, so we made all these commitments to this commission, we bought this, let us out now so that we can cash out on this thing and not have, have potentially make less money than we might have made on this project. And there's been no foundation for this commission as to why that's necessary. Now, I get it, that's not your jurisdiction. I understand your concern is preserving and protecting wetlands and rural pools, but in the context of this discussion, after going through all of this and after getting these permits together, there's got to be a little bit more here than, oh, it's tough to get fill. Let us use this pumping system forever, basically, or until who knows when, uh, when this is restored, we'll monitor it now and then. It's not the best system. The applicant told me three years ago what the best way to do this is, and that's to regrade the land in a way that restores these wetlands naturally. That was the best way, because if this pumping system had been the best way, I'm sure that would have been proposed, uh, two years ago. So, uh, and it's not the same. And I sort of read and heard Mr. Kenny's remarks tonight, it's not the same. Pumping into this wetland is not the same as what this commission approved. So, uh, we are basically here because, as I read it, there's an economic issue for this applicant that's not been demonstrated. The amount of fill and the availability of fill has not been demonstrated. And I'm just saying that, I know I'm, again, wandering sort of far outside of your jurisdiction, but before you start changing this approval that took forever to get to and was the best plan, there's got to be some substantial evidence that would justify your doing that. And generally, the economics are not this commission's problem, it's the best plan for these wetlands. Now, uh, I, uh, and by the way, my client would be happy to work with this applicant, with these applicants in helping find fills. And he's got, he's made some calls and he said to me that he's got, uh, you know, he, he spoke to people who, uh, and I, you know, I get it, uh, you know, speaking to people and making calls, but I think that there's got to be, and we are, we'll look into that as well. And I urge this commission to also, and let's get the evidence and I'll do it with my client as well, I'll look into the fill thing. And, uh, and there were materials, uh, in terms of the, the actual application, I've been tied up the last couple of days in a couple of hearings and depositions, so I don't know what was filed today, but I saw something in the afternoon from Mr. Soli's firm, I don't know what it is. So what I would propose is to hold the hearing open for the moment, let's work on what, what the fill equation is. Um, I would like an opportunity to review what was filed today, I can't comment on it, I believe there was something filed on Monday as well.
It'll, it'll be in the exhibits probably tomorrow.
It came in at 4:10, Steph Lee's at 4:30. We didn't even process it ourselves.
It'll get, it'll get entered.
We haven't looked at it, yeah.
It'll get entered in tomorrow as an exhibit.
So, uh, you know, ironically, uh, my client points out that Rocket, which is an affiliated entity, uh, took down property and excavated property on Main Street in this town, I think in the last few years and had fill, and I don't know where that went. I'd say an affiliated entity had fill. So, uh, I, I know I've been long-winded, I apologize for that, but I really appreciate sort of the commission sort of getting down to it on this, on the reasons for this application. And I'll, I'll work with my client and come in with some information on that as well. I don't know if you have any questions, Joel Green. If you have any questions. Thank you. No, sir.
The, the applicant's attorney spoke about intervenor requirements to, to tell us and to tell the staff what the environmental damage, potential environmental damage by this application is. Could you tell us what that, what?
He is correct and it's our position that, uh, first of all, that it was violation of deep regulations and I know the applicant's going to spring up and say, you know, we called deep and they looked at it, but our concern is that, uh, there is an impairment of the groundwater, yes, the applicant has tested it, but, uh, we, I will address it in terms of this, so intervening in terms of this piping proposal, what the potential impact is, and I will present that. And I think counsel's remarks are well, are well taken on the intervention, but right at the moment, I'd like an opportunity to digest this a little bit more, but I, he's right and we do have to get to that.
When do you plan on getting to that?
Uh, well, I'll review the materials that were submitted and I don't know when this will come up.
The next meeting?
Yeah.
Is, uh, May 28th.
That's possible, but I understand I have to.
We, we have to close the pub, or we're, we're, statutorily, we're supposed to close the public hearing on the 28th. If this commission needs more information, we could ask the applicants for an extension.
At this point.
At this point, it's, it, statutorily, it needs to.
Apply for modifications as well as permits?
Yeah, it's a public hearing.
I believe it has the same title table as an application. So we'll have to either, I suppose, put it on or. Okay, thank you.
Just a very quick response. Pardon my smile, but the fact of the matter is, is that, um, Mr. Green's client upheld both the decisions of the inland wetland and the planning and zoning. He appealed the decision that required us to bring in 493,000 cubic yards of fill and to have this rigid material acceptance procedure. Now all of a sudden, and now, and he eventually lost that. Now he's coming in and saying, oh, it's a great plan, we always thought it was a great plan. Now please, don't let the wool be pulled over your eye. This is talking out of one, both sides of your mouth at the same time. The problem with the fill is not only finding it, it's the timing of it. You've heard the chairman, Lindstrom, we're going to try to get answers to these questions, but it's not just the availability of fill, it's the, it's the stringency and the timing of getting it and the amount, okay? The other thing, pardon, that we didn't know at the time the last applications were approved was whether. was whether mechanically rehydrating the wetlands would work. And that's why the importance of the sheet flow, establishing the sheet flow, was, was an important thing to consider. We admit that they're not, sheet flow and mechanical pumping are not the same. But we, this commission now knows, has evidence that mechanical pumping will bring back wetland to invertible. Now, you're right to say, well, we want to make sure the system continues to work forever. But there's no longer any question that pumping will work. And that obviates the need to bring in all this fill. Again, we're not saying they're equivalent, but it's good enough. There is no perfect solution to this problem that was created starting 25 years ago or so, or 20 years or so. So that's, that's, that's one point I wanted to make. The other thing that was missing from the comments that we just heard was, well, we'll withdraw our objection to the stringent material acceptance procedure. They wanted it. Did you hear any, any comment from Attorney Green just a few minutes ago? You know what? We're willing to agree that the stringent requirements for this fill can be lowered. Did you hear any of that? No. No. We're going to try to get answers to the questions. I think your question was, well, is there any type of fill that would be satisfactory from an environmental concern that you might be able to get? We're going to look into that. So please, haven't heard anything about that. They've appealed every single decision. Last thing on the intervention. This is not the way it works. You don't intervene and then say, you know what? I'm going to come up with reasons in a month after I'm intervening. Statute requires your intervention petition to specifically list the environmental concerns that you feel. You don't have a right to wait. That's not the way the statute works. And I'm going to object strenuously to him trying to find additional reasons. That was not part of his original petition. Okay? It's job unfair. It's not the way the statute works. And it's unfair to the applicant to string this along and then two, two weeks from now or three weeks or four weeks from now say, oh, you know what? I've just decided here are all of my environmental concerns. So I'm going to, I'm going to object to that. And we may need to get the town council's opinion on this. Thank you very much.
We just got this information. We're trying to digest it as well, sir. We just got this information tonight.
I understand, but the plan, but the intervention petition supposedly is one that is filed from the original application. My point is, Commissioner Smith, is that the statute requires when you intervene in these actions, the petition itself has to spell it out, okay? If the plan changes in a significant way, sure, you might have the right to amend your petition. But his initial petition is defective. And he doesn't get to sort of explore the entire application and then come up with reasons that don't work. It's not fair to the applicant.
Thank you. Just, yeah, just briefly. I'm not looking to get involved in a lot of back and forth, but just so that the commission understands, and Mr. Finn swept over this a little bit. Our claim, and one of our primary claims in Neil and Webb's appeal, was that the property was not being restored to its original state before it was pro-reparated. Our claim was that basically this was a development plan. It was a plan to redevelop the property and prepare it for development, not a restoration plan. And the court, you know, denied out the, so that happened. In terms of the material acceptance protocol, why don't we see what's available for fill before we start? It's, I mean, it's a possibility to amend the material acceptance protocol, maybe. But if we find that fill is available that meets the original standard approved by this commission, so be it. And I didn't say that I love the plan that was approved by this commission. We did appeal it. But I'm saying the applicant said that it's the best plan. This is the best plan. That's what I said when I appeared before the commission. And my last piece is, anyone, any citizen can intervene at any time in any proceeding under 22A16. And we can amend our petition, as Mr. Finn knows, and he's saying that as it exists now, in his opinion, it doesn't have enough detail. We'll fill in the detail, that's fine. Or we'll refile it if Mr. Finn would prefer. It's, it's fine. But, you know, I wouldn't get to, I wouldn't lose any sleep over his objection.
Okay.
At this point, we're going to need a bathroom break.
Well, we found the public.
Yeah. I was going to say, why don't we call a five-minute recess? Do we need a motion for that or not?
Yes.
Need a motion to take a five-minute reset? I'll make the motion to take a five-minute. Second?
Second half.
All right, five-minute recess. Wait, we have to.
Probably don't need one, but you never know.
Five-minute recess.
All right, who seconded that?
And I think everybody's in favor of that.
Yeah, yeah.
We're back in session?
Back in session.
Back in session. Okay. So now we are on to the public participation for IWC 2021-06R-A1, file number 137664, Cambridge slash 4 in Pennis Drive. Do we have anybody in the chambers who would like to come up and speak? Anybody online?
We have people online, but nobody's raising their hand. Just a reminder, anybody online wants to speak, raise your hand button.
Or press.
Nine.
Start or nine?
Start or nine.
A minute to do that. All right. All right, so we continue this to our next meeting?
May 28th.
May 28th.
28th.
May 28th.
Okay, moving on to deliberations. I don't think we have any at this point.
Yeah, we, we did, we moved.
IWC, go ahead.
Oh, right. So much to debate about that one?
Motion to approve with our standard conditions.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Any other?
No additional, no additional conditions of the approval. Great.
Okay. No bond releases? All right, IWC agent activities report.
Okay, I'm going to make a quick.
Please through the.
I'm going to make a quick change to this. Do I need a motion for that?
I think that it's under IW agent activities report, just because you put it in a law order under F, I think that's fine. We're going to ask to move the enforcement up to get the gentleman.
So I just want to move IWV-2025-06, file number 1537, which is 22 Plumer Lane. Want to move that up to the top right now because Thomas is, you got this in your packets. This was in your packets.
Are we on here?
We are on 22 Plumer and it was in your packets. It was a violation.
Which, oh, okay, I'm in force, got you.
And Thomas is the property owner, well, actually, he's not the property owner, but he's about to be the property owner. He, he was, he's the person responsible for the violation and he's here to answer any questions that we might have. I'll give you a quick rundown of it. This homeowner was issued a building permit on his property for an addition that he was putting on that, when inspection, footing inspection was done and the building inspector brought it to my attention, that the limits of disturbance have been far pushed out further than it was supposed to be. So I went out and took a look at it and sure enough, the land was really cleared all the way back to, almost to where there's a, an intermittent water stream back there. So the violation is right up to wetlands. I do want to make note here that there is a three-foot pile of debris that was probably about years and years old, but that's sitting right in wetlands. And if you could see from the pictures, there's skunk cabbage all over and these are.
Pile on picture number four there?
Yeah.
We're looking at?
Picture number two shows the extent of the violation. So essentially where I'm standing on number two, taking that picture, is looking back at the wetlands. That pile of boulders in picture number two, it's about that spot right there where it drops off, there's three-foot pile of brush and debris, which you can see in picture number And I believe that, that debris has been there for many years. It's probably just been continued to be dumped upon. So that was not created by, that, that particular part of it was not created by the applicant who's in front of you right now. The boulders that you see there, he did have permission to move those boulders from one area of his property to remove that. You didn't get one?
He didn't need one of these guys, huh? All right, we'll share.
Have this in your packet.
No, it was here somewhere. I saw it somewhere.
After the meeting notes.
Sure. Anyway, your first picture there shows where the potential wetlands are, the first picture, and where the limit of the clear cutting was. And it shows you where the upland review area is. You'll see on the second one, you'll see the disturbed area, you'll see the property lines and where the photos were taken from. And you'll see all the pictures over here. So photo number two is the area is, is really the limit of the disturbance that took place. Picture number three was all the boulders, that he had permission to remove those boulders, but not permission to move the boulders into place. So he wasn't.
Say it again.
All of these boulders over here were on the side of his property.
Right.
Outside the upland review area.
Okay.
In his application, he was, he asked to remove the boulders. I don't think it was clear as to what was supposed to happen with those boulders. And instead of removing them from the property, he moved them all the way to back the property.
Gotcha.
All right, and in doing that.
Moved, not removed.
Correct.
Got it. Okay.
So those boulders are now sitting in, in what is wetlands. And there's other debris in here. I think it's also worth noting that while I was out there, I did notice, unfortunately, I did notice a plant that was thrive, well, a plant that was growing in there that is an endangered plant. It's, it's a native wetland plant. It's called trillium. My guess is there was probably a pretty good stand of them there, which doesn't really exist anymore. It's a hard plant to find. The, I keep saying the applicant, but the, the property owner really had no, would have had no idea about what this plant was. The applicant has been very responsive to the notice of violation and the, the site inspection, and he was, he's been very forthcoming. And I guess the question really is, what do we have him do to remediate this? Can it be done administratively? I have put together a remediation plan based on what my recommendations would be in order to bring this back. And the property owner's here to answer any questions and just figure out what he needs to do at this point.
Okay. Thomas, this is your plan or this is?
This is mine.
This is your recommendation.
This is my recommendation for restoring this if we, if we decide for him to restore this. So my suggestion is to take those boulders out of there and line them where we decide is a good spot to line them up.
To not move them, not.
Now, to now move them to a place where it will create a physical barrier for the protection of the wetlands and the upland review area behind it. With a fence behind that, that will hold the wetland markers on the posts of the fence.
Split rail, you said.
A split rail. So animals could go underneath it, animals could go over it.
Obvious fact.
It's a physical barrier so that, so that people will know that these are wetlands and there is regulations associated with it. One of the reasons for this whole violation to be taking place and for that land clearing was to get more lawn into the backyard. And the request is going to be, can we move this line of boulders from the 100-foot upland review area to 50-foot outside the wetland, the flagged wetlands? He did have the wetlands flagged. I went out there. It's a little different than what is shown on the GIS as a potential wetland, but not significantly. So the wetlands really are, you know, if, the question is, can we go out 50-foot and still provide that buffer between the wetlands and the upland review area and allow this homeowner to have that 50 feet of extra of lawn and still create that buffer zone? Or do we want him to come all the way out to the 100-foot upland review area where he shouldn't have been in the first place?
Right.
Okay. Thomas, sorry.
All right. No, I appreciate the introduction. So, yeah.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Oh, and sign, no, never mind. Yep, state your name and your address.
Thomas Stacy, 16 Willoughby, Shelton, Connecticut. So as you mentioned, I'm not the homeowner yet. Just to give a little background, my late father-in-law and my mother-in-law own the home. Father-in-law wants to battle to lung cancer in January. So then we decided to purchase the property from my mother-in-law and create an accessory dwelling unit. Kathleen has probably heard me call about 70 few times and said, same with like Thomas Noonan. I've been trying to do everything the right way. Clearly, I messed up here and didn't do it the right way. I probably should have taken more caution in terms of what we were doing with the rocks. In my head, I was like, all right, well, I need to move the rocks so they can start baking the space. And right now I'm living with my mother-in-law in my house, her mother, with two dogs and a cat, so it's a pretty full house. So I'm pretty eager to move the project along as soon as possible. My landscaper, who I got to confirm they can move the rocks, said, oh, why don't you just make a barrier at the back of your property so you know where the property land is? I did not think, I did not think I had enough. So I should have been more cautious, probably kept calling and said, hey, am I allowed to do this? When we did the plans, you know, I mean, I probably went back and forth on the permit about, it was over a month and a half, just making sure everything was being done correctly. I mean, I had to make sure, you know, that parts aren't really relevant, but, you know, I just thought, hey, I can move the rocks back there and I clearly couldn't and I shouldn't. And, yeah.
Are you good with this?
I would really prefer if I could get a little more lawn for.
You want lawn?
Oh, yeah. I want more space for my, my son. You know, one that my father-in-law wanted to do with his house was get a swing set for my son. He was a recent grandpa. It was only three months when my father-in-law passed. So one of the things I want to do is put a swing set there for him. So, you know, I know I messed up and I want to make it right. And I don't want to be some guy who's supporting you for five, six years and not doing the right thing. So I went and got a soil report, made sure they came out and did everything and I'm just, I'm just kind of asking for forgiveness here.
Just get your son a caddy job across the street at the golf cart.
I'm playing there. I will. That would be a nice goal.
Yes. Lots of lawn.
You'll notice in the plan I did require at least finding 12 of those trillium. I know they're available and I informed him he may have to hunt and find them.
Right. Now, did you mean blueberry or bayberry?
Blueberry. Blueberry. High bush blueberry, it's a, it's a native plant. And it's great for him also because it's fall color, summer flower, yeah.
Yeah, anything that can help aesthetically for my mother-in-law and my wife would go a long way for me. Yeah, anything that can help aesthetically for my mother-in-law and my wife would go a long way for me personally.
I will add, if you, if you allow him the extra 50-foot of lawn, it still creates a nice buffer between the wetlands and the property. It would also cut that plant, it would cut the plants in half.
So what would the bulk for be if he had the extra 50 feet?
What's that?
Hold the wetlands, the wet-
It would still be 50 feet off of flagged wetlands.
Right now, your limit is 100?
Right now, what I'm showing on that plan-
What is that? This is 100.
That represents 100 feet.
Do you want to shorten that?
I don't, I don't want to. He was, yes.
I would like the plan, the hope is to draw that back in.
Yes, what I've done is I've put together a remediation plan based on 100 foot.
Gotcha, okay.
Part of, part of, if this is done through a remediation, through an agent, an agent-approved remediation, I would make a condition that he does not use fertilizers. Again, that's not something that we can police, but we could put it on his, you know, as a condition of his approval.
I don't do my own lawn, so I will just tell them to do it that.
Yes.
Please.
It's okay if you have a lawn and it's not, because when the kids play, it's not the, not the perfect Astro lawn that, you know, Scots would have you have.
Just want a lawn. I think, you know, trying to make it work the best I can.
I'm good with giving him another 50 feet.
I'm good with 50 feet.
I am.
Let the kids run around. Kids need to be outside more.
Okay, 75. You know, can we split the difference?
75, let's give him more.
No, he said, take 75, give him only 25.
He asked for a little more space. 25 feet is a lot of space, you know.
We on pond starts?
Yeah.
We on pond starts.
I applaud your, your, your plan. I think it's a great plan. It'd be great. I wish you could do my yard and, and I'll, you know, but near the end of there. And I appreciate your attitude, sir, but, but 50 feet is 50 feet. I mean, you know, that's-
I'm fine with 50. Everybody else fine with 50?
I'm good with 50.
50 it is.
So, wait, so 50 and you'll let him finish it administratively?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay, great.
But please, can we vote?
Yes, 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 yes.
Motion.
Do we need to motion that?
Yes.
Motion for-
Motion to-
Administrative approval and moving the limit of disturbance 50 feet from the wetlands mark.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
You have a second? All in favor?
All right.
I'll tell us.
Rick?
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Motion passes though.
Okay.
You two can coordinate.
Yes, I'll, I'll be in touch, yep.
All right, thank you. You're good.
If he has a problem with it.
All right, I'm good to go.
You're good to go. Sorry, sorry for making you wait so long.
You have three minutes to go through the rest of it.
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
Probably give you some good comedy if blood sugar is coming up slowly. Yeah, you can get some good humor. You got to do it in three minutes and get boring again. Again.
Okay, IAA 2511, file number 1535 is 80 Christiana Drive. It's removal of six large dead standing trees. Some within the upland review area and some are actually in wetlands. So this homeowner called. He had an arborist come out. A large tree fell during a windstorm. The arborist came out, said, hey, these other six trees should really come down. They're standing, they're dead, they're elms. Three of them were in upland review area, three of them were in wetland area. And they were all, I felt, as a safety hazard because they were all on the edge of the woods going into, that could fall either on the house or on the property and damage something. So I issued him an agent approval. Conditions of the approval were for the stumps to remain in place. No heavy equipment was to be used in the wetland area. Outside the wetland area, he was able to, I let him, you know, bring a chipper onto site. But most of the debris to remain onsite and wetland markers to be installed along the edge of the woodland.
And thank you to that arborist because the arborist looked at them and said, hey, you need to go to the town and talk to England. So I was happy to hear that the professionals in town-
For a change.
That are actually helping guide residents.
Yes. Any questions? All right, moving on. IAA agent approval 25-12, file number 1536 is 634 Wheeler Road. Installation of a chicken coop with excavation stormwater management within the upland review area. It's about 100 square feet of upland review area is going to be taken up by impermeable surfaces because this chicken coop is going to have a roof on it. It's going to have a concrete floor. Yep, and it's going to have a chicken run. It's going to have a chicken run. So there'll be an area in the chicken run that is covered with a roof. So it's a pretty serious chicken coop. But it did have to, you know, there was excavating going on in order to get the concrete. Could it be considered as of right? Yes, but it's not even in wetlands. So yes, it, it, yes, it could be considered as of right. I suppose so, yeah. So I did ask him to add gravel around the drip edge of the, wherever the roof is. So it's got some stormwater management there. So I issued them the, an agent approval on that, and they're waiting on their 15-day appeal period. Questions?
Why is cement necessary though?
Cement floor easier to clean up.
Keeps foxes out.
Oh, yeah, yeah, keeps the foxes. Oh, I didn't even think of that, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep. Any other questions on that? Issued them the agent approval, so, all right, moving on. Agent approval, IAA-25-14, file number 1538, 30 Old Colony Road. Removing of an existing deck, replacing that existing deck with a three-season room associated stormwater management within the upland review area. The proposed disturbance for this project is 40 feet off of potential wetlands. But the wetlands are on in a budding property, so I can't even determine where that actual line of wetlands are. But it's 40 feet away from potential wetlands. I gave them an agent approval. Conditions of the approval were to install a silt fence with pre and post-construction inspections and to install a rain garden for the stormwater management. They are currently waiting on their 15-day appeal period. Do we have questions or comments on that? No. And 22 Plumer, we already talked about that. Okay, that was it.
All right, so moving all the way on to minutes.
The minutes, the regular meeting minutes for 423, 2025 look good unless anybody else had any issues with them. I compared them to my notes and everything seems to be matching up correctly. And then the special meeting minutes for the site visit was also accurate.
That's a motion.
Yes, motion. Yeah, motion separate, yep.
I'll motion to approve the regular meeting minutes on 423, 2025.
Michelle Kelly, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
I'm abstaining. I wasn't here.
We, did we, I, I didn't hear-
Yeah, okay. I, I haven't been able to take a look at it really. I got this tonight, right?
The minutes? The minutes were in your packet.
They should have been in your packet. A part of the 14 pages? Okay. Okay, then I did review it, and I'm sorry, my notes, but there's no, there's no comments. I'm good. I'm good.
Yays, okay.
Yay.
Unanimous, okay.
I'm abstaining because I wasn't here.
I wasn't here, everyone's here.
Yeah, so.
Uh, yep.
Five to zero to two. Wait, four to zero to two. And now we need a motion on the special meeting.
I'll have the motion to approve the minutes for the special meeting.
Second.
You have a second?
Yes, I did see that. You're right.
All in favor?
Standing.
Standing.
The door is open, I'd say.
I'm abstaining.
Yeah, we're, yeah. All right, look outreach.
Wait, give up my second. We use everything we need.
The special meeting, it was Eric Ryan and Jim.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Look outreach?
Look outreach, if you want to talk about the pamphlet, we, we could talk about the pamphlet. We could talk about the table at the farmer's market. So yes, we can.
We table that till the next one.
Table both of them to the next one.
Sure with that.
At least, we need, we'll need all of June to print some of these up because I don't think it's, I don't think we're far off. I think it's close.
I think we're so close on it. I just, I just want everybody's input on the content that's in there. I don't think we need to talk a lot about it. I think if, if everybody could just make notes on there, then we just want to compare like notes. So if everybody's saying, hey, we don't like this, we'll take it out, you know?
I have a couple of comments, but I think we can make-
Please, put them down and write, we could do this on emails too.
Okay, let's do that.
Problem is, it always gets to the end of a meeting and, and we're tired and we don't want to talk about it.
I don't want to talk about it. I'm tired.
Right. That's what's important.
Yeah.
Okay.
Darren?
I'll just go to Darren.
Who?
Second?
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
All right.